Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all loves us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, a true Lord, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Guard, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Counselor, any disclosures of a junior interest? Not seeing it this time. We will move on to our deputations and I will call upon Jared Robertson to present. Yes, they're very awkwardly positioned, sorry about that. Yes, thank you.
Um, hello, Mayor Coughlin, Deputy Cabral and members of council. Uh, thank you for your time today. I know there's a lengthy agenda, so I'm just gonna get right into it. Uh, we can go next slide. Um, we can go next slide. Um, so just a brief overview here. Um, I'm representing the newly founded Elmville Harvesters Senior Hockey Club. And I'm here to request council approval for ice time allocation via Elmville Minor Hockey for the upcoming season and beyond. Uh, to give you a background, we are a part of the Ontario Elite Hockey League, which was established under its current format in 2023, but has existed under different names since the 1940s. Uh, the league is focused on delivering competitive, high level, um, and community oriented hockey to rural Ontario towns while providing teams a path towards the Allen Cup, uh, Canada's National Senior Championship. Um, next slide. Um, our township has a rich hockey heritage and this is a chance to build on that legacy. The Elmville Harvesters will not only provide entertainment for families and local fans, but will also contribute to our local economy by attracting visitors, benefiting local businesses and creating an engaged community. Uh, next slide. Uh, we are excited to partner with Elmville Minor Hockey Association. Um, they have generously agreed to allocate Saturday evening ice times for our home games during the season. And they've provided us a letter of support that highlights the collaborative spirit between our organizations. This partnership aims to strengthen community ties and promote the development of young hockey players in our township. Next slide. Um, so today we are requesting the township's approval for this ice time allocation. The Alan, the allocation would enable us to host home games that engage the community, support youth development and stimulate our local economy. Uh, we are in, we are committed to ensuring a seamless scheduling process, um, that respects the needs of existing user groups and fosters ongoing communication and collaboration with the township of Springwater. Um, next slide. Um, thank you for considering our requests. And I'm looking forward to questions and discussing how we can work together to enhance our community through this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn to members of council for any comments or questions. Counselor Garwood.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coughlin, and uh, thank you, Mr. Robertson, for being here today and for advocating for recreation in the Elmville community. I think this is an exciting endeavor, not only for Elmville, but for Springwater as a whole. I know there's many hockey fans up here, uh, and in the room today, so that's pretty exciting. I want to speak about, uh, just more comments than anything, Mr. Robertson. Um, A, I think it's great to have EMHA's partnership here, right? This doesn't happen without them, without, uh, the Saturday night ice time being provided, so that's significant. But the next thing is understanding the, the other service clubs in the community that utilize the ice. Um, I had a conversation actually with members of the skating club and they're very excited about the initiative. So there's, there's support beyond, uh, the community and beyond EMHA, which is also great to see. Um, but from an economic standpoint, this actually came up at one of our past Elmville BIA meetings around the excitement of, again, bringing another attraction to the arena in the winter months when we know it can be, uh, dark and cold and sometimes not as many visitors to our community. So I think it's an excellent initiative and I'm happy to support it and I, I will be putting an amendment forward at the end to proceed.
Counselor Alexander?
Just a quick general comment. Uh, again, very excited to see this. I think it's a great opportunity for Elmville. It's a great opportunity. For the youth of Elmville that are in playing minor hockey to then watch the older people, watch people continue, you know, their hockey careers. Um, again, to echo Counselor Garwood's sentiment, um, thank you for partnering with Elmville Minor Hockey and doing that work before just coming to us because it makes it much easier. Um, but definitely happy to support this. I've talked to many, many people that are very excited about this.
Counselor Thompson?
Go Harvesters.
Thank you. Counselor Fisher?
Just a quick note. I really like your logo and your name. I think it's very, uh, Springwater centric. Uh, you know, it hearkens to the agricultural roots of the area. So I think it's, uh, I think it's very well named and, uh, the logo suits the, uh, the area. So I'm in full support.
Okay. I think I echo the comments that have been made here and I think as we continue to get a little bit older, a lot of our friends are watching their kids play their last minor hockey game. And it's emotional for the grandparents, for the parents, and I think that this just continues the tradition of hockey in Elmville. So thank you for continuing that. At this time, I will turn to Counselor Garwood.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coughlin. Uh, through you, I'd like to put forth an amendment to approve the Elmville Harvesters Senior Hockey Club's, uh, request for Saturday night ice time moving forward.
And a second for that, Counselor Alexander? No, we're good. And we have, we'll combine it as one motion. All right, perfect. That the delegation from the Elmville Harvesters Seniors Hockey Club be received and that, oh, sorry, no. And that council hereby approve the allocation of Saturday evening ice times for the home games drawn from the EMHA ice time allocation to the Elmville Harvesters Senior Hockey Club. Counsel, all those in favor? And that has carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will now call upon Cheryl Schindrick and Vimal. You would think I would know how to pronounce my name. My apologies, but the Midhurst Landowners Group to present. No, it's just typically V, so. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, Deputy Mayor Cabral, Cabral and members of council, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, present to you this evening. Uh, my name is Cheryl Schindrick and I am Executive Vice President at Geranium. And I'm here this evening representing the Midhurst Landowners Group. And joining me, of course, is Vimal Patel, uh, who is Vice President of Land Development at Geranium and very involved in the landowner group. This evening, we are going to present an overview of the material that we filed, um, over the past month and a half in connection with discussions on the proposed, uh, boundary adjustments and, um, annexation proposal by Berry. Um, as a landowner group, we take great interest in these matters, given the significant commitments that we have made collectively in Springwater and the County of Simcoe and in particular investments in infrastructure. If you go to the next slide, please, I'll try and remember to, uh, prompt you along. Um, just a little bit of an over, um, outline on what we'd like to cover this, this evening. And if you go to the next slide, please, thank you. So who we are, um, accompanying us this evening are representatives of the Midhurst Landowners Group, whose names you, as you can see on the slide above. You'll recognize these names as well established builders and developers who have successfully developed master plan communities and built thousands of homes across Southern Ontario and indeed throughout North America. The Midhurst Landowners Group has been working with council and staff at Springwater and Simcoe County since the early two thousands, about 2004, when we first began this process. And we are all committed to continued collaboration and mutual success over the next decade and beyond. If you go to the next slide, please, thank you. Um, the technical work that has been undertaken over the past, um, few months has been produced by a group of experts who have been working alongside the Midhurst Landowners Group, the township, and the county over the past 20 years. They have, over this time, amassed a significant volume of technical material, respecting water, wastewater and transportation servicing, phosphorus management, provincial land use and planning policy and land budgeting, natural heritage protection, economic, uh, impact forecasting and agricultural assessment. If you go to the next slide, please. So why we are here? We are here this evening because the MLG is committed to Springwater. We are invested in this community and we believe in its future. The joint land needs analysis completed by Hemsen in December of 24 outlined two op- you this evening. In February, we accepted the challenges set out in the February 5th resolution and assembled the best information that we could in the time available to us in order to meet the June timeline set out in the resolution. We stand behind our work and acknowledge though that as with all of the work that we have completed to date in Springwater, um, it must be reviewed by township staff and the township's peer reviewers and all applicable review agencies. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please. So a little bit of history, as I alluded to, we as a group have been working in Springwater since 2004. That the secondary plan known as the Midhurst Secondary Plan was adopted by the township in 2008 and approved, uh, in 2012. Along the way, we undertook accompanying, uh, work through the class environmental assessment. Um, phases one and two were completed in 2009. Phases three and four were completed in 2020. I would note that in the, the scope of the work that was done, um, essence or aspects of it extended beyond the secondary plan boundaries. So for example, when we were doing the, the master drainage plan, um, the Willow Creek Sub watershed study is an area that goes beyond the secondary plan areas. Similarly, the, the master transportation study looked at areas outside of the secondary plan, the 400, uh, lands, for example. Um, as did the Assemble of Capacity Study work. So why we are raising that is because we have, it's part of our understanding of the geography of this area. And the team that has been working in this area, you know, over the last 20 years, um, brings that to the table, um, in this exercise. The next slide, please. Uh, so as referenced, uh, on February 5th and at the June 4th, uh, growth management, uh, update by WSP, there are two areas that have been identified for potential expansion, one to the east, identified in pink on that, uh, figure and the area to the south. Um, these areas contain roughly 3,000 in the pink area along the, the highway 400 area. And there's approximately a thousand acres to the south. If you go to the next slide, there is a listing of the work that was done over the, the last four months. And as I said, we took on the challenge in the February 5th, uh, resolution. Uh, we mobilized the team and, um, we were able to pull together the material that you see listed on that slide, um, and provide it to the municipality. I want to note that, uh, as I alluded to earlier, all of this work needs to be fully reviewed and vetted by Springwater staff and, um, the, the peer review team external to Springwater. Uh, the next slide, please. I'm going to just touch on a few of those reports and some of their key findings. Um, Malone Given Parsons, uh, provided a planning opinion in connection with the proposed expansion areas. And as was noted by, um, Hemsen, Berry and Springwater are part of the same regional market area. And this principle was identified even when we were working on the Midhurst Secondary Plan. It was acknowledged then that we share the same regional market area. There's a high degree of economic and social integration in the regional market area. So you find people who live in Berry and work in Springwater, people who live in Springwater and work in Berry. That back and forth is very common. Uh, sometimes it's referred to as a commuter shed. Malone Given Parsons' work identified that, um, and in keeping with what Hemsen reported in December of 24, that there's a, a large amount of unsatisfied growth that is required for Berry, particularly in ground related housing units. Um, and this work also shows, as Hemsen noted, that there is an opportunity to accommodate that growth within the regional market area, uh, but not necessarily in Berry per se. If the lands can be serviced in a, in a surrounding or neighboring municipality, that that is an opportunity that ought to be considered. In addition, the lands on the 400 were also identified as an opportunity for Springwater Township in terms of establishing a strategic employment area. Key to all of this, of course, is servicing. And the work that we've, uh, put together and this, and submitted, uh, and which needs to be further reviewed and vetted by, um, by staff and the agencies, uh, points to an opportunity to do that through the Midhurst, um, infrastructure. The next slide, please. Um, so the, the scope of development that is potential in these two areas, we had assessed, um, the, we, we looked at the economic spinoff benefits from all of that development. Obviously, a lot of employment is possible in the Highway 400 corridor. You see the numbers on the slide, um, over 20,000 jobs. Uh, the assessed value that would come from having these lands incorporated into the secondary plan and identified for development creates a, a, a significant, um, amount of additional assessed value, $11 billion, uh, which would generate approximately 140 million, um, per year in property taxes and, uh, 716 million in development charges. And all of that development over time would generate, um, almost 250 million per year in retail spending, benefiting businesses, uh, that are here today and still to come. I also just want to take a minute to, uh, identify or, or mention that with the Highway 400 lands, there are great synergies that can be had with the regional, Simcoe Regional Airport, that is just a few kilometers to the east. Um, we asked Dr. Clayton and, uh, Mr. Kelleher, who are the two economists on our team, um, to review the Watson, uh, report that is on your agenda this evening. And, uh, I would note that that report was completed by Watson prior to, uh, our submitting this information that is now before the township. And so could not have reflected that material. Um, Mr. Watts, Mr. Clayton and Mr. Kelleher have got questions about some of the assumptions that were used and therefore the conclusions of the Watson material. And they're here this evening and certainly can answer questions, uh, in that regard. Uh, the next slide, please. Uh, okay, so this is, um, Dr. Clayton, um, prepared a, a bigger picture review of the proposed expansion areas. And, um, one of the key points that he makes is, and it's reinforced by a, a report that was done by the CD How Institute, is that, um, the housing affordability and supply challenges in, in, um, Canada, and in particular in large metropolises like the Greater Toronto Area, there ought to be a focus on some of these more out, outlying, smaller city regions as a place to accommodate this, this growth. Much of it is, is, um, it's found in more ground related housing options, which are much more difficult to do in, in the Greater Toronto Area. And so, um, that is a, a point that I would put to, to counsel, uh, and others that this is a, a great area for development of ground related housing as we're doing in the Midhurst Secondary Plan and as there's additional potential to continue to do. Uh, would you please go to the next slide? As with any, um, additional urban, um, uh, designation process, we had, uh, an agricultural assessment done and, um, just to understand the, uh, the quality of the lands and certainly to identify any agricultural operations that are to be afforded appropriate, uh, minimum distance setback, uh, requirements. If you go to the next slide, please. I am going to now ask, um, my colleague here Vimal Patel to, uh, provide an overview of the, the servicing material that we have submitted to the township to date.
Thank you, Cheryl, and, uh, good evening, Mayor and, uh, members of council. Um, so the plan you see on the slide, uh, is, uh, a summary of the existing, uh, services in place to support the Midhurst Secondary Plan. So the area that's outlined in the blue or the baby blue color is the improvement her secondary plan. And the services for that, on the left side or west side of the screen, you will see a square box. That's what's referred to as the utility campus. And that is the current home of the existing wastewater treatment plant, as well as the water treatment plant for the Carson neighborhood. On the right or east side of the plan, uh, referred to as the Dora neighborhood, there is also a water treatment facility being constructed as we speak, which is nearing completion, as well as a sanitary force main that comes across town to connect to the wastewater treatment facility. The two bubbled black, uh, areas that you see on the screen, uh, I'll start with the one on the north, uh, east side of the plan. As you can see, that is a logical linear extension of services that could service the proposed employment areas. Now, to be clear, our estimate of $15 million is only the linear component. And the necessary pumping stations or booster stations that are required to service it will be vetted through the detailed design process as we follow that process. Similarly, on the south side, to bring on the additional, uh, employment lands on the Bayfield Corridor, which we will speak to later on in the presentation, that is a, again, roughly $15 million cost within two kilometers to the nearest connection point on Snow Valley Road for sanitary and water. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so next, what we thought we'd do is, uh, thank Mr. Mullen from Ainsley, uh, as well as apologize to him that we did not get a chance to meet earlier, uh, to review some of these materials Cheryl mentioned, uh, in order to be reviewed and vetted. Um, what we thought we'd do is address some of the key points, uh, in Mr. Mullen's comments, uh, with the consulting team here. Uh, so if you go to the next slide, the first point, uh, being, uh, yes, uh, these reports, uh, are preliminary and the sufficient backup material will be provided through the necessary detailed design process once we go through that, uh, process, such as an official plan amendment or Class CA amendment. So we agree that we will provide those detailed investigations at the appropriate time. Uh, the next comment that was made was for the appropriate use of the employment lands, uh, based on the land use. Uh, TY Lynn, our wastewater and water engineer, uh, in the report, uh, assumed a flow assumption for those uses. And, uh, for that, I'm going to call upon Les Janos from TY Lynn, uh, to address that, uh, comment.
Are you kicking me out?
No.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the Class CA identified, uh, the Class CA that was completed identified the current servicing methodology to be the preferred alternative to service the lands. And in terms of employment, what we typically do is we look at what we call equivalent units. So we design for residential and then we apply an equivalent factor for, for the employment uses. Typically, employment uses, what we're finding are dry industry, office, warehousing and logistics. So we don't see a lot of heavy water users anymore. Um, typically low flows, few employees. Employees from the community that are, when they're at work, they're not using water at home. And, um, the sewage influence characteristics are very important. What we assumed in the Class CA was that it would be domestic sewage, so not industrial sewage, which means solvents and that sort of things that you would see in, say, a heavy metal or, um, a processing plant. And, uh, the type of treatment that we have here is, well, the type of water supply is groundwater versus lake based water supply. So it's important to recognize a lot of municipalities, if they're on groundwater, typically don't encourage or don't try to attract industry that uses a lot of water, heavy water, because it taxes their system and they can get fewer units in terms of providing housing and growth. Uh, the Ministry of Environment Guidelines from 20 years ago are still in practice today in terms of how much water is recommended to plan for, for industrial uses and employment land uses. Um, again, what we're finding is a type of industry that municipalities are supporting are typically not heavy water uses. So you're seeing a lot lower flows than what are being recommended in the ministry guide and the current ministry or previous ministry guidelines. Um, some additional studies will be required, um, an amendment to the Class CA and we're prepared to do that to support this initiative. Um, as was mentioned by Cheryl, the, the secondary, secondary plan studies looked at the greater area outside the secondary plan as well. And in designing the, uh, wastewater and wastewater facilities, uh, I wanted to highlight that there is sufficient room, we believe, on the utility campus site to provide additional water and wastewater facilities. So we're not on a very tight constrained site. We do have room to grow. And we're proceeding on a phase design to meet the needs as they come online. Yes, basically.
Thank you, Les. Um, the next point, uh, in, uh, the peer review comments, uh, alluded to the Assemble of Capacity for Willow Creek. Um, so based on the preliminary work that Hutchinson has completed to date. And keep in mind, they have been monitoring that creek since 2009 and subsequently 213, uh, to gather the data for the Assemble of Capacity of Willow Creek. Um, so in order to accommodate the proposed expansion lands, Hutchinson feels that through the modeling work they've completed to date, that they can, uh, address that. So I would like to call upon Brent Parsons, uh, from Hutchinson Environmental to address that point.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us. Um, I have been the one that's collected a lot of that data since 2013, along with our company. We completed the, uh, original, uh, similar capacity study, phosphorus budgets and other supporting monitoring studies over the years. Um, so that's part of the reason we're able to quickly complete a preliminary Assemble of Capacity Study because we still have the model that we used in 2018 and we have lots of updated data from Willow Creek. Um, the preliminary modeling indicates that we can meet MECP requirements, which at the end of the day is what is required to regulate the discharge of effluent in the province of Ontario. And the modeling indicates that we can, we can meet those requirements even at higher flows, effluent flows than we, um, assessed in our original letter. Um, if, if so needed, based on additional flows from employment lands. Um, this will be achieved through four main, uh, steps. Number one is the continued use of low effluent limits. Number one is the continued use of low effluent limits for specific parameters. Um, those being total phosphorus uh and total suspended solace, which both are routinely lower in the effluent than in the creek itself. Which is worth noting that, you know, the um uh, the the current plant achieves, uh, you know, an incredibly high level of effluent, as is. Uh, the second step, lowering of some effluent limits um will likely be required in the future, such as those for nitrate and ammonia. But through um our previous work, we complete a similar capacity studies throughout Ontario for different municipalities. Um, we've seen those effluent um limits at other plants. Um, so we believe that that is technically feasible. Uh, the third step is phosphorus offsetting, which maybe some people have heard about. Um, that's more so with the load of phosphorus um that would be um related to the additional development. Um, there's been a really successful phosphorus offsetting project completed on Willow Creek up uh near the Napoleon Lands, which has um essentially taken phosphorus out of, out of the creek to offset additions um that will occur in the future from the wastewater treatment plant. And then the fourth step is um relatively uh a simpler one is changing out the the diffuser at the end of the pipe of the wastewater treatment plant in Willow Creek itself. And we have them, we have models um that allow us to see how the different diffuser designs impact the mixing of effluent for specific parameters. Because one of the policies that the Ministry of Environment um requires is that you keep a mixing zone as small as possible of those uh, those different parameters. So that's something we routinely routinely do as well. And um, based on the uh, the diffuser, the open pipe that's there now, I'm quite confident that a diffuser will allow for that to occur. So I think those four steps and solutions are uh, are will allow us to achieve uh and meet M E C P requirements. Um, apart from other potential high level ideas that we mentioned in the report, such as effluent storage, um, which might, which um, uh, Mr. Mullen and Ainsley uh noted might be unrealistic for the site. But again, I think these four steps um will allow us to meet M E C P requirements associated with wastewater treatment.
Okay, thank you, Brent. Um, if you go to the next slide. Uh, the next couple of points raised was just uh with respect to the water supply or water demand that we would need to take into account. Um, so absolutely, we agree with uh some of the points we heard from Les that uh based on the actual flow demand from the appropriate uses, we would complete those investigations through any class EA amendment process uh to find those water supply wells uh for the Midhurst to secondary plan expansion lens. Um, the next point uh, which is uh linear infrastructure. Again, I'd just like to highlight that um, any additional upgrades uh that are necessary, uh such as local sewer improvements or pumping stations, et cetera. Those have not been taken into account in our preliminary studies, but they will be as we follow the normal detailed design process. Uh, next slide, please. Um, uh, this slide here uh speaks to our next phase two expansion, which I will speak to detail later on the presentation as well. However, uh, beyond our current existing plant of fifteen twenty-nine, our next phase two expansion has been designed to accommodate approximately thirty-four to four thousand units. And we will be phasing that uh with tertiary treatment modules, uh, as Les mentioned earlier, to respond to the demands from the residential and employment uh as needed. Uh, the important point here is that phase two expansion contract, the MLG, has awarded that to Canadian Contracting. Uh, it is funded and we're currently working on the contract documents to start construction in September of this year. Uh, the next point on that uh um uh review was uh with respect to the uh low flow or the uh liters per capita flow rates that was assumed. So just a bit of background there, uh, we, the MLG, have been monitoring the flow data since we occupied the existing plant and commissioned it. And that data supports uh a lower flow uh of actuels than what the EA contemplated of four hundred and thirty liters per capita. However, we agree that the MLG will continue to monitor those as we go on to the future. And if there's opportunity to adjust those flows, which we believe will be the case on the lower end, then that will add additional capacity to the plant. But of course, this will be subject to review and approval by the township, the Ministry of Environment and the peer review engineer. Next slide. Um, with respect to uh future growth, uh, so a couple of comments uh that were made with respect to uh the first one being the existing facility. We, the MLG, just wanted to highlight that the existing facility on site uh is a permanent robust structure. Uh, but we wanted to highlight that we will deliver a standalone plant in accordance with the requirements of the EA of ten thousand units. And the existing facility can remain on site for use as appropriate by the township and the county. Um, the next point uh we wanted to clarify is we agree, as mentioned before, that the linear connection points to the proposed expansion lens that we demonstrated earlier, uh fifteen million dollars, were just the linear extensions. Any of the supporting infrastructure that may be required, such as pumping stations or improving local services, that has not been included. Uh, and I'd like to call upon John Priamo from S C S uh to add some uh further detail to that statement.
Mayor, member of council, members of council. Uh, so the one thing that we just wanted to expand on uh was the, the Bayfield Corridor has been studied previously. Uh, it, whether it was the class EA or the report that was done by W S P, um, noting that there was always servicing assumed along that corridor with sanitary and water. Uh, and the inclusion of the M Z O lands, both the Sadlin and Remington parcels were not anticipated at that time. Uh, and so the uh assessment of additional servicing required to have those lands uh incorporated is something that needs to be studied further. Um, but it would require essentially upgrades to the servicing that was contemplated previously. Uh, depending on what the final site plans for those two pieces uh come to with respect to populations, it would then determine how much, say, larger the sanitary pump station uh and water main uh size would need to be, um, which would, you know, be probably anticipated, uh, you know, to be larger than uh the fifteen million uh for the linear services that we assume, but not in the range of the hundred million that was quoted uh in the, in the Ainsley comments.
Okay, thank you, John. Uh, next slide. Uh, so uh just to uh finish off here, I alluded to this earlier is uh with respect to uh our design for the next uh phase of expansion, uh, we will be doing it in phased tertiary modules and any revisions to the uh flow data, we will continue to monitor and revise at the appropriate time. Next slide. Oh, I think we did this one. Next slide. Uh, yes, um, so this slide here, as you can see on the screen, represents the existing infrastructure that is in place at the utility campus. So uh on the uh left hand side of the screen, you will see the uh wastewater treatment facility that's complete with uh raw um pumping uh raw wastewater pumping station, headwork screening, equalization tanks, all the necessary components that make up a wastewater treatment plant. Towards the right side, that is the Carson Water Treatment Plant uh that has been sized and constructed to service the first phases of development. And uh in the background, you can see our our phase one A uh of our Carson Road subdivision, which these facilities uh currently service. Uh, important point to note here is that the utility campus is a fifty acre parcel. Uh, and with respect to future expansions, there is more than ample and sufficient space to design uh for the utility uh treatment plant uh expansions as necessary. Uh, next slide. Uh, here, uh, just a further picture of the wastewater infrastructure. Uh, and just to highlight again that this essential, this is an essential piece of infrastructure and critical for the commissioning of the next expansion of the plant, and it has been integrated uh to do that. And as I mentioned earlier, uh, when we complete the ultimate phases of the plant, this uh existing facility on site uh is uh robust and can remain on site for uh uses deemed appropriate by the township and county at that time. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, here is a picture of the water uh treatment uh plant on Carson, uh as well as the uh water treatment facility that's currently under construction in the Dora neighborhood and will be nearing completion in the fall of uh this year as well. Next slide. Uh, here, I just wanted to highlight, um, so uh, we did complete a site tour with uh uh the mayor and members of council, as well as the Ministry of Environment on September seventh, two thousand and three, and the deputy minister, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the deputy minister Serge was also in attendance and the ministry made note of the fact that the state of the art scalable facilities were were impressive and we can design and respond to growth as needed without constructing entire uh up, large sums of infrastructure upfront in order to get housing uh going. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, I'll just quickly run through these as uh the team here touched upon it. But the assimilof capacity, again, uh, we feel confident through Hutchinson uh that uh the expansion lands can be accommodated uh based on the work they've uh collected to date, uh as well as some of the measures available to meet ministry guidelines. Next slide. Uh, as well, um, John touched on this earlier with the extension of the linear services uh at the south end and the east end, they're within two kilometers. Uh, and again, any of the associated uh infrastructure upgrades such as pumping stations, et cetera, will be driven through the uh detailed design phase. Next slide. Uh, transportation, um, I'd like to touch upon this uh as Cheryl mentioned earlier. Um, we completed a very thorough uh detailed transportation study through the class EA process and working with the M T O as well. Um, this area extended beyond the Midhurst Secondary Plan to capture traffic volumes along the four hundred corridor in addition to any interchange improvement. So um, we're confident through the work that B A has done that uh to some degree, those volumes were taken into account and can be accommodated with the expansion lens. The last point I'd like to highlight is with the uh employment lands and or uh community uses coming online, this provides another opportunity to internalize trips within the township and taking less burden off road networks outside of of the township, uh, which, again, the MLG has committed to substantial road improvement upgrades uh through the class EA, which we will let deliver through the 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 class EA and secondary plan process. Next slide. Um, here, I just wanted to clarify, um, so in April sixteen, twenty twenty-five, uh, there was a staff report clarifying the uh plant capacity and uh phasing upgrade. So um, the existing plant of eight hundred units was successfully rerated uh based on the actual flows we've been monitoring to fifteen twenty-nine. The next planned upgrade uh in accordance with the A A is five thousand units, five thousand units after that for a total of ten to twelve thousand, and any future upgrades will be delivered as necessary. On the next slide, uh, we'd just like to further dive into the details of how we propose to subphase the expansion. So again, as of today, the existing facility on site can accommodate fifteen hundred and twenty-nine units. Our next expansion, we anticipate approximately three thousand four hundred to four thousand units using three hundred and fifteen liters per capita. And these will be phased in as necessary with the required tertiary treatment models, modules. We are working on this with township staff and Ainsley, so this is subject to approvals. However, we can also confirm that through the landowners group, capacity is available for any nonparticipants when we deliver this uh this expansion. The next point we'd like to make is obviously subject to township and ministry approval is we believe additional capacity can be realized in the plant as we continue to monitor flows and if they support the lower flows that we've noticed to date, we believe lower than three fifteen can be achieved, which if we assume two twenty-five, which again is subject to township and Ainsley approval, uh, we could be looking at approximately seven thousand units without expansion. And lastly, our next phase three expansion, we will continue to respond to residential and employment demand and uh create those expansions as necessary. Uh, next slide. And uh, I'll turn it back over uh to Cheryl.
Okay, very quickly, I just wanted to um hone in on the Bayfield Street Corridor for a moment. Um, when we did the Midhurst Secondary Plan, we looked at the Bayfield Street Corridor as a um redevelopment corridor for mixed uses. And subsequent to that, township commissioned W S P, who did a much more detailed um assessment of the potential in that corridor. Um, their initial work was set out in their report of June twenty twenty-one. And um, the next few slides, if you would just um kind of uh go through them or or um step through them, uh, show the their extracts out of their report. And um, so it starts to um talk about the potential that they identified. They worked together with Watson to look at the market opportunities in this area. They did a massing analysis, which the previous slide just showed. And then you can also see on this slide that's up there right now, um, the much more granular identification of character areas, they were called, or precincts, where um the work really focused in on what was, what is the potential along that uh corridor. Um, and then I I want to um uh add on to that, that council has given their support unanimously to the two requests for M Z Os at the bottom end of that corridor, just outside of this this study area. And that's the Remington and Sadlin Parcels. And so we see that there is an opportunity for Springwater to realize the vision that they've um, that has been identified for this corridor uh by servicing Remington and Sadlin through the Midhurst uh facilities. Because that is going to bring the pipe from their their parcels, the south end of Springwater, through the corridor up to Snow Valley Road. Um, and therein unlock the potential in this corridor. So we um also asked our economic consultants to look at the economic benefits of doing that. What is there to be realized with the servicing of this corridor sooner rather than later? Um, because without that, there's no immediate need to have to service the lens along the corridor. So uh, if you go to the next slide, those, the results of that analysis are set out there. Um, and it's I, it's divided up by the Bayfield Corridor itself, which is based on the data that are in the W S P report of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and then we've utilized the statistics um that are um uh presented in the the material that was presented to council as part of the requests for support for the M Z Os. And so you can see that the the economic benefits to be realized um in servicing these lands um are significant um in terms of assessment value. We've got um, that's, is that one point five billion? I think it is. Um, and then uh annual property tax revenues of fifteen million. Um, the development charges, of course, are significant at a hundred and twenty-seven million. Um, a lot of jobs to be generated, uh, construction related uh impacts through the buildout of the lands and um, and so on, um, including retail spending. So there's a huge opportunity there for all of us, we would suggest in um looking at the opportunity to service these two parcels of land at the bottom end of Springwater uh i- in the expansion area of the Midhurst Secondary Plan through the Midhurst facilities. So with, if you go to the next slide, then um, I just want to highlight um for a minute, um, the investment by the Midhurst Landowners Group to Springwater and Simcoe County and the, and and there and the commitment that this group uh has already made. We've all invested hundreds of millions of dollars in land um acquisitions. Um, there is about a hundred million dollars that has been spent on external infrastructure that has been built already through the facilities, the wastewater, water treatment facilities, force mains and roadworks. And you heard Vimal talk about the the expansion that um is um underway commencement, commencing this fall um to the phase two of that water uh wastewater treatment facility. That is being done through a combination of funds allocated by the Midhurst Landowners Group, as well as provincial funding through the Hughes um housing enabling water systems funding. Um, that has been identified by the province to um deliver more housing. Um, there is also a hundred and seventy-five million invested by this group in the internal infrastructure, local sewers, stormwater management ponds and parks. So there's a huge commitment by this group to Springwater and Simcoe County. And we are wanting to work with you on um ensuring that Springwater is um the best it can be and that we're there at the table with you uh in partnership. The final slide is um just a bit of a a wrap up, a conclusion. Um, our partnership with uh Springwater and Simcoe County and the province for that matter dates back to two thousand and back to 2004, when we first started our work in the community. We know that there's a significant shortfall of ground-related housing in the regional market area that Springwater is positioned to be able to accommodate to a great degree. The Highway 400 employment lands presents an amazing opportunity for this area and certainly has been identified as an opportunity to address the shortage of employment lands in North Simcoe and certainly will benefit the entire regional market area, including Barry. There are synergies between that corridor along the 400 and the Simcoe Regional Airport, not that far away from it. So again, we are committed to working with Springwater and the county to see this region be the best it possibly can be. And so with that, I'll, we'll conclude our presentation to you. As we noted, our team is here, and we're happy to respond to questions should council have any.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation, and I'll open it up to the, or do you want to move in second? I'm over in second, please. Councillors Moore and Fisher, and that the delegation from the Midhurst Landowners Group regarding the Growth Management Study recommendations and potential Midhurst expanded lands be received. And at this time, I will open it up for comments and questions. Councillor Fisher?
I just wanted to thank, thank the MLG for coming forward and giving us so much information. It was a lengthy and in-depth presentation that, you know, certainly answered a lot of my questions. I think that with the pressures that are being put on us provincially for growth and, and frankly, the pressures that are also being put on us from the city of Barry with talks of annexation, this is very confidence inspiring for me. What I see and what many of my neighbors are asking for is a maiden Springwater solution to our growth problems or our, our growth future. So when I hear about the costs being in line, much cheaper, when I hear about capacities being achievable with the Phase Two plant, also that the, you know, many people phone me and ask me, you know, is this plant even feasible? Is it coming? Well, it's been awarded and it's funded. So this is very achievable. As a matter of fact, I think to do it in a timely fashion and start addressing things like the Bayfield Street corridor, it's, it's very easily done, and this is not something that's decades away. It's, it's mere years away. I also would like to talk a little bit about the Bayfield Street corridor, hearing things like character areas. And many people want to know that we have, we have creative control over our lands, and this is something that scares many Springwater residents. Will we lose control over the character of the area? I think with annexation, we would. And hearing, hearing that we can actually develop effectively, develop fully the Bayfield Street corridor and start realizing things like $15 million in tax revenue, start realizing the DCs that can be collected and benefit our communities, but also that we have full control over what happens. I think that the presentation was very good, and it's very confidence inspiring.
Councillor Moore?
Thank you. Thank you through you, Mayor Coghlan, to the presenters. Thank you very much for bringing your experts to, very informative. I'm wondering though, if, if your expert, Mr Clayton, who happens to be in our gallery today, if we would be able to ask him a question or two also? Thank you for being, thank you for being with us today. I want to recognize that you are a legend in your field as an economist and certainly a wealth of knowledge. And I'd like to, if I may, ask you to share maybe some of your credentials and also expand on the report that you've provided us and your findings.
The short version.
The short version. Thank you.
Now, I've been around for a while. I started my career with CMHC, and then I set up my own consulting firm for about 35 years, which was bought out by the Altus Group some time ago. And then about 10 years ago, I helped set up an urban research center at Ryerson University called the Center for Land Development and Urban Development and Land Development. And, and so we've been working, I've been working with students and doing research on the Greater Toronto Area and often the Greater Golden Horseshoe. What we're doing is bringing an economic focus to, to the urban problems and challenges in the Greater Toronto Area, the Greater Golden Horseshoe. And so that's, that's the short version of that, yes.
Councillor Moore? Thank you. And then to maybe elaborate some on your report that you've provided for us, expanding development opportunities in Springwater.
Well, I, I, I've been working in this area for a long time. I have done a lot of work up in Barry back, back in, the last time we had a housing crisis was in the latter, previous one was latter 80s, and we were doing a lot of work up in that, at that time. The first thing is, as has been said, is that municipalities are not housing market areas. The commuter shed is, as we call in the jargon, the census metropolitan area, which is, we would call in the regional market area. You have to look at, you know, where people live and work altogether. And so we look at that. But there's a shortage of, you know, as has been said, of ground-related housing, single semi-townhouses, maybe stacked townhouses and so on. And so we've got to get as much of that as possible because the planners, and I'm talking as economists now, the planners for the last 15 years have been saying, everybody should be in an apartment. Basically, we don't want any greenfield development. And that was the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, is that basically that. No, and, but people wanted ground-related housing. So the fastest growing, you know, people are leaving Toronto and Peel Region, particularly Toronto, coming up to Peel or Simcoe, Simcoe County, they're going to Durham, or Durham is part of the GTA, but they're going to Niagara Region from the west, define the kind of housing they want. So they commute farther. So to have land that has lots of ground-related housing which people want, and then also have a development that has a lot of potential for industrial unemployment and commercial lands, brings it all together because every, the planners do want something called complete communities, as much as possible to have retail jobs and so on together. And that's why this, this development is, is doing that. But I looked at it also from affordability perspective because, a broader kind of perspective because it's, the C D Howe Institute did this really fantastic study recently about, you know, if you want to really do something about housing affordability, you don't build the housing in Toronto. You build the housing where it's cheaper, and then you get the jobs along with it. So that was a premise of, of my analysis. But yeah, so, so that's basically the conclusion is that, you know, large-scale developments, mixed-use developments with industrial and so on are the way to go. And with industrial, we're finding that, you know, if you have the land there, something could happen. And my classic one is my hometown of Woodstock. When Toyota was looking around, Woodstock happened to have this land expansion urban, it wasn't in the urban area at the time, but it was an expansion area. And Toyota, and they, within, you know, weeks almost, that land was converted and parts of it expropriated for Toyota. And Waterloo Regions doing something similar now, doing a big land assembly. So there's a need for large, large land holdings. And so that's, you know, which you can't get around Toronto anymore. You got to come up the corridor, either, you know, go east-west in Toronto or up north. And so that's all very positive. So, so the development, to my way of thinking, is, is the way to go. Complete community, providing the kind of housing that people really want, which will be more affordable, and it just makes a lot of sense.
Follow on?
Thank you very much, through you, Mayor Coghlan, to Mr Clayton, or Dr Clayton. Have you had a chance then to review the, the Watson presentation that is coming up after this presentation? I'm just curious on your opinion, if you have one.
Yes, I did review it just, I just, a few days ago. I was surprised by the conclusion because historically in Ontario, municipalities, and still, I think it still applies, if they had an assessment ratio of 60% residential and 40% non-residential, that was a healthy, that's a healthy balance. And this development is about, based on the assessment estimates in, in the, in the, Watson report, about 65% of the assessment was residential. So there's 35% non-residential. That's, that's a very healthy balance. So I'm very surprised with the conclusion that, both on the non-residential side and the residential side, this development has a deficit. It just doesn't ring with my experience. And so, so I had some questions about that, but then I have a lot of questions about the estimates, how the estimates were derived, which are not, you know, it's a high-level kind of now quick analysis. So I, I can't really say too much more about, until I had a chance to look at all the estimates the way it's done. But the one, one factor that did bother me is your industrial tax rate is very low, but then you don't have very much industrial assessment. So if you just brought it up to half of what Barry, you know, if you brought the county in your assessment industrial tax rate up to even half what Barry has, you would, you know, that would, that would make the overall non-residential pay for itself. If you brought it up to double that, which is about what Barry is, it certainly generated surplus. So there's certain methodological, methodological problems or challenges I have with that sort of study as well.
Councillor Moore?
Thank you. And thank you, I appreciate all of that. I do have one more question though, if I may, for TY Lens, if I may. Thank you. Unless there's been else some questions. Thank you, and thank you for your analysis also. I wanted to go back to your submission around the EA in 2020. And I'm curious if you happened to take a look at infrastructure on the city of Barry side from Springwater. So at the border of Springwater and city of Barry, are you familiar with the infrastructure capacity and capability that is on their side? I'm not sure if you've, if you've come across that.
Unfortunately, I'm not. I just came to the file just recently.
Okay.
So I'm not aware of that.
Your worship, Vimal may be able to respond to that question if that is acceptable? For John Pina.
Oh, thank you.
With respect to the servicing on the Barry side, the existing services that are at the boundary of Springwater and Barry aren't sized to accommodate any additional growth in Barry. They, the top end sewers and water main kind of at the boundary are what you would expect at the boundary of a municipality where they are kind of nominal depth, nominal size. Certainly not something that would have anticipated thousands of additional units to come in the future.
And I think, I think before we continue, I am going to note that the delegation request was not to peer review what is before us. The information, thank you for bringing it. However, the opportunity for others to peer review and provide that information to this council, we're not receiving it. Council received your delegation hours before this meeting, or sorry, received the information package. Our staff have not had an opportunity to go through this. Our council has not had, or at least I haven't had an opportunity to, to see the presentation that was before us. I understand that there's an opportunity that when we have this many brilliant minds in the room, but I do feel that on our agenda, it does not say that there's going to be a debate on the technical aspects of servicing. There, there are other proponents that should be given the same opportunity, and I just want to be mindful that what we told the public that was going to be discussed this evening, this conversation has completely taken a different direction, and I'm, I'm actually having difficulty with it. Councillor Fisher?
I respectfully, I see your point, Mayor Coghlan, but actually I find, and I don't see it as a debate, I actually, many of the, the, many of the questions that I had are being answered tonight, and many of the questions that have been posed to me from the public are being answered tonight. I do like the fact that there was a level of peer review because there are, as you said, many brilliant minds here with bringing different conversations to the table. But I have actually liked the fact that in, in real time, we could see answers to those questions being posed. So I do see the point you're making, but I also see tremendous value in, in this delegation tonight.
Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Coghlan, and again, thank you for the Midhurst Landowners Group coming tonight and being very informative. And I too would like to acknowledge the great contribution that you have made and are going to make to our community in the future. I too was a little dismayed that I didn't get this information until a few minutes before we went into a meeting. I, I kind of, I called the clerk earlier this morning and asked where it was and hoping to get it so I could actually review it a bit. But just a couple of questions that I have with regards to the presentation and so on. I think it was September the 6th, 2023, after we approved unanimously these two MZOs, we received a letter from your, the Landowners Group saying that cautioning us because the allocation of water and wastewater wasn't allocated for in these two groups, and it seemed that you had very little interest in, in pursuing it. At that, at that point, unanimously as a council, we decided to go to the city of Barry and to see if they would consider offering us cross-border servicing. So what's really started this whole very interesting and delightful conversation about annexation versus boundary adjustment and so on and so forth. So first question is, what has changed since then? How have you somehow found allocation for these two important projects, number one? And number two, we've paid a lot of taxpayers' money to peer review your information or the information we had, both with Watson and with Aynley, both very respected, respected consultants, consultants that too have done a lot of work, and we have a lot of trust. I think it was Councillor Moore who said herself that, yes, we trust Aynley, let's have them come forth and share the information. So you kind of put us in a bit of a dilemma here that, you know, Councillor Fisher said it's wonderful to have all these intelligent, great minds here with us tonight. Whose opinion do we follow? Which, which consultants does the best work or has the best mind? So, you know, as we go forward, first I would have liked to have this information sooner. And if you could answer these two questions, is, you know, why, what has changed and who should we follow? And also a question, I guess this would be for our staff, I guess maybe it's unfair to ask them, but you've quoted a $15 million taxation for Remington Group and, and for Sadlin, which is, which is a windfall. I mean, that taxation would really come to us whether Barry services the land or whether you service the land. The development charges would, would come to us whether Barry services the land or whether we service the land. So I really don't see that as a, a value for us at, at this point. So if you could answer those questions, that would be great. Thanks.
Your worship, through you, to Councillor Thompson. I'll, I'll take a stab at responding to your questions, and I'm sure Vimal will have more to, more to add. So first of all, with regard to the presentation, the presentation is intended to summarize the material that we submitted over the last month or so. So you would have received copies of the, you know, various pieces of correspondence from the MLG, and that is what we intend, we attempted to summarize in this presentation. So while the presentation arrived this afternoon, the information in it, you know, has been, has been before you for some time. I would say with respect to the notion, the question around, you know, who to believe, this is a, has, has been a collaborative process. Our work to date with the municipality has been based on submissions made, reviewed, feedback, you know, a back and forth. And we acknowledge that that needs to happen more thoroughly with your peer reviewers and your staff, that, that given the timeframe that we were working in, we put together what we could in the couple of months since the February resolution was passed. And we know that, that we need to sit down with your team, internal and external, on that. So it's not a question of who to believe, I think it's that there needs to be that dialogue still take place. With regard to the Remington and Sadlin lands generating taxes and development charges for the municipality, we acknowledge that. But what we're seeing is that if they're serviced through Barry, it doesn't, doesn't give you the opportunity to open up the corridor in perhaps its timely way if they are, as if they were serviced through Midhurst. Because bringing the pipes from the north to them, then automatically provides that opportunity for the corridor sooner perhaps rather than later. So that's the point I think we're trying to, to leave with you. And Vimal, would you elaborate on?
Yeah, to you, Councillor Thompson, through the mayor. Just to speak to the Remington approaching the Landowners Group, I can confirm in fact that earlier this year in January, we did have multiple meetings with Remington at the Caushere Engineers Office along with a trustee, and they approached us, and we went through the normal protocol of giving them their proportionate shares and calculations. We were We were more than happy to accommodate them to come to the table, uh, because with this next expansion, we would just plan for them, uh, in, in, if they were ready to come to the table and do their first phases of development. Keep in mind that when we do these plant expansions, whether they're five thousand unit, seven thousand units, based on a traditional absorption of, let's say, three hundred units a year, that will take years to, to, um, realize. So the question of is there room for Remington and/or Sadlin for the first phases? The, the answer is yes. And I just want to highlight that we did meet with them. We did offer to give them their proportionate shares and calculations. We did even reach out to Sadlin, but, uh, after that, we just, uh, did not, did not hear back from them. So, uh, hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you. And we do have correspondence from, um, some of the other landowners. So my question is, you, you just stated that there is capacity in phase one. And, and again, I'm going to go with phase one because the, the communication and the, the correspondence for ten years has been interim plant, phase one, phase two. So I would, I would like to just remain consistent with that. So the phase one, which is what we're working towards awarding at this time, um, I guess my first question would be, and I, and I'm very clear, I've asked this before, is it awarded? Is the plant awarded?
Yes, it is awarded to Canaden, uh, the successful contractor. Uh, we're just finalizing working with township staff in Ainsley, that tertiary module phase design, but it has been awarded and Canaden is at the table.
So the, the tender has been selected and currently from what I understand, the, the, the conversation now is the plant is now moving from the original one hundred and sixty-eight million dollar build down to, last I heard, approximately seventy to ninety million. Can you explain to me the, I'm assuming that a plant of that capacity, if it's a smaller plant, what is, what capacity are we losing?
Through you, uh, uh, to mayor. So yes, uh, the, the original tender of a hundred and sixty-five million, uh, we're now awarding an eighty million dollar contract, uh, to further sub-phase a plan to respond to commissioning. Through our initial process with the existing plant, we've learned that due to the lower flows, it, we had to truck for a lot longer than anticipated because the critical components of the plant couldn't be fired up. So on that premise, uh, the hundred and sixty-five million dollar design was a five thousand unit, uh, plant design based on a leaderboard capital of four thirty. With our current design that we're proposing with township staff in Canaden, it is a tertiary modular system where we can respond to the number of units that come online. So we can adequately and efficiently fire up the plant for the equipment, uh, to work. So that is what we're working on right now with Canaden, uh, and, uh, your, your team to finalize, uh, with, uh, construction to commence in September.
So if I can add to that, your worship, you're not losing capacity. It's being phased, subphased.
So we're still aiming to the, the original ten thousand units. It's just going to take longer.
Yes. Well, it's, it's being done in concert or in step with, with the development needs.
Okay.
Because as Vimal said, uh, building a large plant with very low flows, the facility doesn't operate properly. And so we're trying to size the expansions to coincide with the, the amount of development needed at that particular point in time.
Thank you. And the, the cost sharing agreement that has been established amongst the Midhurst Landowners Group, am I to assume that that then creates a list of who gets to develop when and using, utilizing that capacity? Is that correct?
Yeah, uh, uh, to, to answer your question, mayor, um, with our cost share agreement amendment that we recently completed, that does allocate that capacity to current participating members. However, uh, the agreement, uh, that we all have now executed does have the ability to transfer that allocation internally between each other and or non-participants that, that come online and join the group. Yeah, or new members. Thank you.
And, and so then, just for my own clarity, so that would be, so the, the capacity dictates how many homes are being built. So it's not additional or more homes. It would simply be reallocating what is existing. So the provincial target of more homes faster by servicing through our own plant, is that possible? Because you'd have to reallocate the existing capacity.
So it is because your worship, that more, more parties at the table, more parties seeking to do different things, is building more things sooner. So, uh, it's using the same infrastructure, but it's allowing that infrastructure to get built sooner, uh, used sooner, and then expanded sooner.
Deputy Cabral? Counselor Fisher and Counselor Alexander?
Um, you know, a few points. Uh, one, uh, like many counselors, I've, I've done a tour of our existing wastewater, uh, treatment facilities. So, uh, it makes complete sense to me, not that I'm a sewage expert, but, uh, that growth would be in concert with, uh, the growth of the plant would be in concert with the growth of, of housing or, uh, or just growth in, in general. It makes complete sense to me, just so that the plant can function. Uh, just to go back to, uh, two points that were made, one, the existing infrastructure at the Berry City limits, uh, and I've asked this for well over a year now, uh, that seems to be in question. Will it even facilitate hooking up, right? So right now, what I look at, when we talk about who to believe, I see a solution right here in Springwater that's viable. Um, but what I hear is that the pipes don't allow for capacity, uh, for the, the MZOs, uh, already. Um, and my last point is this, uh, Counselor Thompson made a point about, uh, and it's very, very rightly so, taxation being the same and DCs being the same. And I think you're right, Counselor Thompson. However, I do know that in order to go with the Berry solution, our residents would be giving up tax revenue. They would be giving up forty-three hundred acres. There is a cost associated with it. So in order to move in that direction of annexation, in order to support their, um, their hookups, I think there's a massive cost to spring water. I also have to say that maybe that would allow the, the expansion of the Sadlin and, uh, Remington lands. But what happens after that, right? Is it just, is it just undeveloped for years to come? I want to find a solution for the Bayfield Street corridor that sees the entire, the entire area flourish to the, uh, the design and the, uh, what we hadn't envisioned years ago. So I think that although there may be some similarities, I think we need to forge ahead with the maiden springwater solution.
Counselor Alexander and then Deputy Cabral.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. And just, just a couple of comments. First off, I would like to thank you for coming and presenting. Uh, as a first term counselor, it took me a long time to wrap my head around what the Midhurst Landowners Group does and who you are. It's a very unique model. Um, I think it's a very beneficial model, um, in that we are allowed, it allows us to develop without and in with take, not having the tax burden on our residents. Um, so I think it's, it's an important model and I, I, it's quite interesting how it goes. Um, just with a couple of the comments around the table, and we've had these conversations before. I struggle with some of the rhetoric towards this group. Um, and how it's said with respect to your presentation coming in at four o'clock. Uh, that was the first time I received it as well. That was the first time I had the ability to read it. That's, that's a procedure issue on our end. That's not, has nothing to do with the presenter. We allow presentations to come in at the last minute, which is often frustrating because of you don't have time. But that's, has nothing to do with the presenter. That's on us. So I don't think it's fair to put that back on the Midhurst Landowners Group. Um, and with respect to adding the peer review, again, thank you. There was, I didn't find there was any pointing fingers in that peer review. I didn't find there was any, this group is wrong, we're right. It was offering, you know, answers to questions, so we don't have to come back again, and we don't sit again until September. So, or I really appreciate the fulsome review. It is a lot of information to digest. Um, but thank you for continuing to support our community and being such a long-term partner.
Deputy Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Um, we're, we're, we're sitting here right now because this council decided to, um, look at Remington and Sadlin's and provide them with an MZO to circumvent our planning policies. We did that in order to take control of the Bayfield Street corridor for ourselves. Um, and it seems to me that this has come back to become a bargaining chip. And, uh, I'll be quite frank, sometimes when I think about it, it's like, I don't want to use the word, um, it's kind of like having a gun put up, you know, the side of your head in order to have to do something. A term I would use in my previous life in law enforcement would be extortion, but that's a very, very strong word. So what ended up happening is we wanted to do the right thing by two developers. And that right thing turned around and it filled this room with people on their own time, their own dime, their own dollar. And we talked about tax dollars, Counselor Thompson, and I agree with you, we've spent tax dollars. But out of all the reports that the Midhurst Landowners Group have taken the time to present to this council because of a motion that was on the table, that, uh, Counselor Moore put on the table, that we supported unanimously. And through their good grace, they turned around and they answered it. So I applaud the Midhurst Landowners Group for doing that because what you've really done is you've shown this township, Springwater Township, what the potential is for us to go forward, and we should be doing it in partnership. I'm sitting here listening to someone who has monitored the Willow Creek since, uh, twenty twelve, I believe. You did give twenty-nine as well, but I wasn't one hundred, hundred percent sure about that. So if there's someone in this room who knows about the Willow Creek, it would be that gentleman right there. And I'd also like to point out that, uh, there was a cost associated with all of these reports that the Midhurst Landowners Group has provided to this council. Not only that, they've been great community partners. This is my second term, but I know full well what, uh, you know, some of the landowners have done, Geranium, for instance, uh, supporting some of our community events. Uh, where that wastewater plant is, um, Remington never gave us anything, and I don't like to use the word gave us, but they didn't donate anything to us, and neither did Mr. Sadlin or Sadlin for their MZOs, which is something that, you know, you wouldn't expect. However, Geranium as a community partner, uh, actually, uh, turned around and, and, and provided us with some land that we will be able to develop on our own. So for me to sit here and think to myself that, you know, really what's happening right now is there are two developers who are dictating to this council where they should be getting their water and wastewater from. And those are MZOs that came before this council that we endorsed, two of them. Yet when I look on the agenda, there's two other letters from people who have never made delegations to this council about any kind of development, yet they want to jump on the coattails of being able to get their cross-border servicing from the city of Berry. So in my, my mind, there's something fundamentally wrong with what's going on right now. And I think the Midhurst Landowners Group, you know, you want to build a plant, you can't operate it at forty percent. You have to operate it at a fairly maximum rate so that everybody who's hooked up to it is paying a reasonable amount for it. And now today's the day, really, for the Midhurst Landowners Group and Remington and Sadlin, if they want to move forward, to, to, for them to get on board and make it happen so that we can plan for down the road. I do have three questions, Mayor Coglan. I'm sorry I, I went on like that, but that's how I feel. I feel like this is, uh, an exhaustive process where we ended up having to enter into, um, a boundary adjustment, which may still happen no matter which way the servicing goes. But we had to enter into a boundary adjustment, and this is the bargaining chip? When we have people right here, right now, that are offering, putting together reports to be able to show us that they can provide the water and wastewater. And instead, we're, we're, we're thinking about maybe letting someone else look after it for us. It just doesn't make any sense to me. But I do want to ask a question because, um, and, and mayor, I hate to put you on the spot, but you said we haven't seen, you know, the reports and we didn't have the information and that our staff had not seen it. And I guess one of the questions I have is I know that, uh, staff has had opportunity, um, to, to, uh, work with the city of Berry. Uh, did staff have opportunity? Did the MLG have opportunity to meet with our staff and present this information to them? So that's my first question. The second one is I would really, really like to see the Bayfield corridor become what it can become. And I think the only path forward for that is to run the pipe from Snow Valley south to the Berry City Limits so that everybody along that pipe can, you know, uh, grow, connect, and that can become our vibrant downtown for Springwater Township. So, uh, I guess I only had the one question. Was, was basically in a nutshell, did you have opportunity to meet with staff with, with, with this information?
Your worship through you to Counselor, to Deputy Mayor, uh, Cabral, may I answer?
I, yeah, I was actually going to ask staff if they've had an opportunity. And I will turn to Director Harvey and Planner Russell.
Uh, through you, Mayor Coglan, to Deputy Mayor. The short answer is no. Um, we have not had the time to go through this material. We just received it like council did. Um, but, uh, we are in ongoing conversations about expansions to the plant. Certainly the MLG is working with us on that front as well as Ainsley. Um, but the short answer is no, we have not had time to review what was currently put in front of us.
Director, Director Russell?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and through you to the rest of council. I, I would also add to, uh, Director Harvey's comments that, um, while staff have not gone through at an exhaustive level, we have gone through at a surface level and also submitted those materials to our growth, uh, uh, management consultant, WSP. So all materials, including tonight's presentations, have been forwarded to our, our consultant to make sure that they are aware and that they are formulating the basis of what they will come back to council with.
Follow on?
Yes, so just on that, uh, you know, getting the materials and that, uh, but there's been no actual meeting or roundtable discussion or anything. Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes, Counselor Grab.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. I appreciate it. And, uh, thank you to the MLG for being here tonight and for, for providing the information. Um, I gotta been very upfront about this from the start of this, that it's so important that we receive all information from whatever perspective it comes from, understanding there are competing priorities and perspectives on this. Um, while yes, this council has had this information from a report perspective and a hundred and fifty-five page report, um, give or take. This presentation, this council's been very focused on when we receive information and how we receive that information. So when a comment is made in regards to the timing as to when it is made available, yes, I share that same concern as I received it as I was walking out the door to come to a special council meeting at four thirty today. Um, from the second perspective here, um, I know there's been comments around partnerships and what various different, um, developers have given or brought to the table here in the township. And yes, no one would disagree. We have excellent partners in the MLG in regards to the investment that various different partners have made in the township for Springwater. But at the end of the day, that should not hold weight at this table. What holds weight at this table is what is best for the township for Springwater today, what is best for the residents in the next ten years and the residents that we serve today. And I understand housing is a priority, of course it is, and we as a council are limited in what we can do to circumvent that even if that was the desire. But at the same time, we have a duty to, A, follow through with what the province is asking, and B, to also represent the folks that we represent today. So when I look through here, um, I see, I see a lot of growth, and that is not something new. I've shared that at the last council meeting and, and I keep bringing that up to folks is we talk about these varying different solutions, and whether it is a boundary adjustment, whether it is an annexation, whether it is, um, a significant amount of more homes in our community, this affects existing springwater today. We already hear concerns, especially from the Midhurst community around traffic flows in the community and existing construction. Um, that's been taken decades, it seems like, um, with again, limited housing having been built today. We also see in the report, and I very much appreciate the information, speaks to, uh, property tax at buildout, I'm assuming of a hundred and forty point three million dollars. Again, that's a fantastic investment in our community, but at the same time, we need to remember it's going to take a significant amount of time. So while it sounds like it's going to be a hundred and forty million dollar investment in the township Springwater tomorrow, that isn't just not the case. Secondary to this, and again, it's good that we have this information, but think of the confusion as a whole when we have, again, this information provided to us today, a Watson report, a Hempson report, peer reviewed by Ainsley and Associates. That's a lot of information and a lot of it competing information. And again, back to what Counselor Thompson has said, who do we listen to? Because I know the public's confused. I can, I can own a little bit of humility. I'm confused a lot of the times. So at the end of the day, there is a lot out there. There is a lot for this council and the public to digest and to review, and we're going to take that time and do that. But at the same time, on June the eighteenth, which I believe was our last council meeting, when it was brought forth, suggested, I believe, by the deputy mayor to have the Midhurst Landowners Group come forward. when it was brought forth, suggested, I believe, by the deputy mayor to have the Midhurst Landowners Group come forward, thought that was a fantastic idea. But again, I wasn't under the impression that it was going to be a peer review of our peer review. We asked Ainsley to provide information. I said it, another member of council said it, Ainsley knows the township of Springwater best. And respectfully, I saw part of this presentation as half of it, at least, as critiquing existing work that has been provided by the body, by the group that we said knows our township best. So that's the concern that I have. At the end of the day, there are significant pieces of information in here, again, maps and resources that I will be definitely looking at further. But at the same time, when we're talking about a $15 million pipe or 100 and 200 million dollar pipe, that's a significant difference. And when we are sharing this information with the public, we need to give all the facts. And while it might be 15 million from one point to the next, there's other aspects there. We have to give all of the information. This council is making a significant decision at some point. And we need to be respectful of the fact that we have, while the MLG has provided information here to us today, we've also invested significant tax dollars into reviewing it ourselves and gathering our own data as well. Thank you.
Counselor Fisher?
Counselor Garwood, you said a few things correctly, that we do represent our residents. And yes, Midhurst is very much affected. I thank you for saying that. It does carry huge weight with me, the fact that we do have partnerships with the MLG. What it says to me is we have a track record, right? We've, we have a track record with this organization and they have a track record for delivering, whether it's charitable or whether it's infrastructure, whether it's meeting timelines. We do have a track record with them and that carries massive weight with me. They're not an unknown, nothing speculative. And to also delve into another point, I don't view the, we'll call it peer review, as anything negative. As a matter of fact, yes, Ainsley does know our municipality very, very well, and I anticipate working with them well into the future. They had questions and the MLG answered those questions. So I don't see it as a debate or, as you put it, conflicting views. It's not conflicting, it's answering those very pertinent questions that Ainsley and Watson had and presenting them to the council. In your own words, you know, we're about to make a very large decision. I know for myself, I can't make a deal with 4,300 acres going, our taxation in DC is going to the city of Berry. I really have enjoyed this presentation tonight because it's actually, it's been confidence inspiring to me that we can, and I keep saying it, have a made-in-Springwater solution where we can, we can drive our own destiny. So not to repeat myself too much, but does it carry weight with me that the MLG comes and presents and commits themselves to us? It does, it carries a lot of weight, particularly in, in the South, you know? And I'll also say this one last point, and I know I've made it to you before. It's not just the South, right? It's taxation throughout the municipality. So, you know, you know, I go to your community, Counselor Garwood, and you and I have talked about this, the arena, right? Things like the Maple Syrup Festival, right? And I know that Geranium's been supportive of that. The overall benefits that we get with, with some level of growth in the South, there's a trickle-down effect. We all share in it as a municipality. There's not any have-nots here. So does it carry weight with me? Absolutely, from now and into the future.
Well, I think, I think on that, when, when Counselor Moore brought forward the motion for us to look at the corridor at Forbes, there, there was no talk of an additional 10,000 houses. And I think that when we are comparing apples to apples, yes, there are two solutions, but the solution to internally service it ourselves requires another 10,000 people doubling the Midhurst secondary plan. And I have listened for a decade to residents in Midhurst who have didn't want the secondary plan in the first place. And now this council is talking about doubling it in size in order to run a pipe to two developments. And I think that that conversation cannot be overlooked. That conversation needs to be part of it because this map that we're seeing is doubling the size of the Midhurst secondary plan. When, to date, I'm going to turn to Director Russell, how many homes have been built to date? Approximately?
Mayor Coglan, sorry, I'm just conferring with my colleague here, but it's around 340, give or take, somewhere in there in the mix, neighborhood one.
Thank you. So, so there's still another, well, not quite 10,000, but we're not, we're not even through the first Midhurst secondary plan, let alone talking about bringing on another one. I think that having a conversation about bringing on the Forbes lands is, is a brilliant conversation. I think that it provides all that you have shown us. But for us to just sit here today and say that we are going to move forward with a servicing proposal that includes an additional 10,000 homes in Midhurst, I have great concern about that. Tonight, a lot of conversation has been around the Midhurst, or sorry, the Bayfield Street corridor. And understanding that it is outside of the Midhurst secondary plan, can we speak to the vision for this? And if we do not bring on Remington and Sadlin, are we still going to be able to achieve the goal that we set 10 years ago when we first envisioned this?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and through you to the rest of council. My understanding of the existing EA is that it does not include the existing Bayfield corridor. So there was always an expansion to the EA that was required to incorporate servicing to the Bayfield corridor. So long-term, the Midhurst secondary plan envisions units along Bayfield. They are in excess of the 10,000 units total planned for the secondary plan's neighborhoods, one, two, and three. There's also intensification that it's in areas such as the future development area down on Carson Road, west of Wilson, or East of Wilson, sorry, excuse me. So there are additional lands that are planned for Midhurst for, for future development as well. To your, to your point, though, the Bayfield corridor was always envisioned to be redeveloped. We have a Bayfield corridor study that was done in 2021. We have an intensification study that was done in 2021. Those look to incorporate another, give or take 777 units along that corridor in a mixed-use format, in a higher density format than we're typically used to seeing in Midhurst. So these areas were always envisioned to be developed, but subsequent to the initial phasing for the neighborhoods one, two, and three.
Deputy Cabrel?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. And you actually hit on something that's been perplexing me for a bit. Because if the servicing was from the city of Berry for those two MZOs, that would leave us to run a pipe from Snow Valley to the edge of those properties to accommodate the Bayfield Street corridor. So frankly, if the township and the MLG or whoever it was was going to run that pipe down Bayfield Street to the edge of Sadlin property, and we could prosper until maybe Sadlin wants to hook up with ours at that point in time. Because the pipe would be there. That's the piece that I have a struggle with is trying to develop the Bayfield Street corridor means we have to run the wastewater pipe up the Bayfield Street corridor. We'd only have to run it to the edge of one of those two pieces of property. So our commitment for the pipe doesn't change. It stays static. It doesn't have to go all the way to the border of the city of Berry. So even when we talk about that, to me, it means there's even more compulsion, there's more benefit, there's more foresight to actually moving forward with a pipe on the Bayfield Street corridor, in my opinion.
Director Russell?
Thank you, and the point's well received. I think what we heard from, from Ms. Shindrick tonight was that doing so now moves up the timing to when we could realize that pipe on Bayfield much sooner than anticipated originally, if that's a fair assessment of the comment.
You. Counselor Moore?
Thank you. I just wanted to address the comments about the 10,000 homes. Because in the report and, and what we're looking at are projections out for 30 years. So it's not 10,000 homes tomorrow. It's over the course of the next 30 years and what the future looks like. There is that piece, and looking back to, I believe it was the Hempson report that stated 19,000 homes would be required. So regionally, we're a shortfall because 19,000 homes would be required and we're speaking to 10,000 homes. And I actually think our residents understand that we are, the provincial priorities are today, not even what they were five years ago. So we are being strongly encouraged to encourage development. And I think this does it in a responsible and, well, not only economic, but certainly expedient manner.
Counselor Fisher?
Mayor Coglan, you were, you were given strong mayor's powers, as were other mayors, so that you could spur growth. You know, as Counselor Moore said, over the next 30 years, we'll experience that growth. I just don't like, and I'll call it what it is, a level of fear mongering inside of Midhurst. Yes, you know, the Midhurst secondary plan was opposed for some time, and, and you're right, but stoking up those fears again and advocating for 4,300 acres to go to the city of Berry, well, what do you think they're going to do on it? You know, they will build on it as well. So, you know, the 10,000 home thing, I, I know it's a talking point, and I know maybe it will resonate with some people, but it's over the next three decades. I may not even be around. And so for us to, for us to, to scare the residents of Midhurst and frankly scare them into allowing annexation to happen, I can't allow it. So it, it, it's a point that falls flat with me.
And I will first acknowledge the decorum and suggesting that there's fear mongering. We're taking information and we're making it public. The areas that are identified on the proposal from the Midhurst Landowners Group are also outside of Midhurst. It included, well, the previous map had the Splash Canyon lands on it, but I didn't see it, or I don't think I saw it here. It has lands out by Forbes that were not considered for any cross-border servicing. So it does go far beyond the potential for cross-border servicing. So it's not fear mongering, it's pointing out that this is 10,000 more homes in Midhurst.
Mayor Coglan, when you focus on Midhurst and focus on the last 10 years of people being afraid of growth, I'm sorry, I'll call it what it is, and yet again, I won't apologize for saying it. It is fear mongering because I'm getting a lot of calls about it.
Counselor Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and just to some prior points here. And again, not overly interested in the back and forth right now, but no matter if it was 10 years, 15 years, or 30 years, the decisions we make today, folks, are the decisions we make. When the Midhurst secondary plan was adopted in 2008 and approved in 2012, those were councils of that day that made decisions at that time, and we're still living with those decisions. Good or bad, I'm not getting into that. But at the end of the day, the decisions we make here, we have to stop thinking about what benefits us tomorrow and yesterday. We are making decisions for multiple decades to come, and I still plan on living in Springwater in the next 30 years. So we need to be mindful of that. It's so easy for us as politicians in 2025 to sit here and say, well, we don't have to worry about it for 30 years, so it's fine. But it's not fine. It's been 17 years since the MSP was adopted and staff just confirmed there's a little over 300 homes. But that's still, that farmland being ripped up with infrastructure put in the ground, roads being paved, light poles going in, and residents just being disrupted. And that, again, I'm not here talking about stopping development because I understand it is a provincial priority and it is a priority. And we waste our time when we sit here and we try to stop this. We understand that we can't necessarily do that, but how can we work collaboratively moving forward? And that is what, in my opinion here today, I think that's what the mayor is trying to do here, is trying to provide a path forward where information is made available and the public can provide feedback and this council can make a decision. We have a decision potentially in front of us here. But again, going back to it before, we have asked somebody to provide us with information, and that is Ainsley. Respectfully, we did not seek out the information that is in front of us today.
And is this, is this questioning about the presentation or is it like? Deputy Cabrel and then Counselor Fisher?
Yes, I just, I'd like a clarifying, clarifying moment with respect to the Midhurst secondary plan. Hopefully someone has enough background on it to know that, I don't think Springwater Council asked for it or voted on it. It was actually a stroke of a pen by a minister.
Counselor Fisher?
Just, just a point to Counselor Garwood. You're absolutely right, the decisions of today affect us tomorrow. So you're absolutely right. We all need to take in the information that we were given tonight and think about how we vote in the future, particularly when it comes to, to annexation. So I completely agree with you. But as for, did we ask for the information tonight? Absolutely, I remember asking for the information tonight. I think it's highly pertinent and it needs to be, it needs to be taken in, you know? But, but I do think about tomorrow and I still do think about yesterday.
Not seeing anything, hands jumping up this time? Have I had it moved and seconded? Yes. All right, so that the delegation from the Midhurst Landowners Group regarding the growth management study recommendations and potential Midhurst expansion lands be received. Not seeing anything further, all those in favor? And that has carried, thank you. Want something else is on the floor? There's nothing on the floor. We will now move on to item number five, which is our presentations, and we'll now call upon Watson and Associates to present, please. Good evening, Mr. Abs, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, pleasure to be here this evening. Before I get into my presentation, I just want to maybe clarify something about my role in this assignment. And I know the memorandum and the presentation were included in the agenda package. My work was completed, my report was filed March 30th, so well before this information was available that was put forth to you tonight and previously. And so this assignment is actually completely different and devoid of what was, is being considered as part of the MLG's presentation. So this assignment, my role in this, if you jump to the next slide, please. My role in this was actually in response to some of the discussions with respect to potential boundary expansions. And if the expansions were going to occur, what does that mean to the township? What will you be giving up financially, right? And this is just a financial impact analysis if we were to develop the specific lands that were identified in this memorandum. And again, when you're considering development and considering the, the MLG proposal, there's many other things to consider, not just the financial impact analysis. There's the economic benefits, the planning considerations, environmental considerations, the housing crisis, et cetera. So this is just one component of information that you should consider as part of development of these lands, as part of development of those proposed lands, which I know are fairly similar, just given that they were the most logical extension of the Corinian boundaries. You'd have to consider the financial impact analysis with respect to that development, the proposed information before you. So this is a different exercise with different assumptions that have been identified. Next slide, please. And I guess maybe just as an introduction, I know council's probably familiar with myself. My name's Dara Labs, I'm managing partner with Watson and Associates economists. I have over a decade of experience in the public sector. I've been with Watson and Associates for over 10 years, undertaking financial impact analyses, development charge calculations, water wastewater rate studies, anything municipal finance related. Prior to that, I did work for a municipality, and I did have a brief stint with a Member of Parliament, but politics was not for me. So I'll just briefly go through the methodology and the memorandum that was included in the agenda does provide for a lot of the assumptions that were used, okay? Because at this high-level analysis, we had to utilize assumptions. I'm not an engineer, I can't identify specific pipes that are required or roads that are required, but I can use my, my judgment, my expertise, my experience in municipal finance and municipal-related matters to provide some assumptions, which can then be updated and vetted once a proposal comes forward, similar to what you've seen this evening. So next slide, please. And next slide. So one thing to consider when we're looking at this is the financial impact methodology that we're utilizing here. And we want to say, well, what's the financial impact of growth if we were to develop these specific areas I'll mention? And we want to say, well, what's the financial impact of growth if we were to develop these specific areas I'll mention in a moment? And so what we do is we take the growth and up in the top left, it says here's the proposed land areas and we'll talk about those. What's the proposed population and housing and employment and and gross floor area of non residential development that would be generated? With that, if you go to the top orange box, that's going to generate tax revenue. Okay, new assessment, new tax revenue. In addition, that's going to give you some new non tax revenues, fees, fines, fares, those types of things can be estimated. Now, in the green boxes, we then talk about the operating expenditures. Okay, so with new people, with new employees comes operating expenditures that should be considered. In addition, we took a look at identifying operating expenditures related to the new infrastructure. So with new developments comes the need for roads, water, wastewater mains, water wastewater treatment plants, other services. And so with all those new pieces of infrastructure, regardless of who pays for them at the outset. Become a liability of the township that needs to be considered in the total overall financial impact. You get tax revenue, but that's to offset the expenditures that you're going to incur from the investment in the new services. And so we take a look at all that, put it all together, and we see, okay, well, what's the potential impact on the budget? So what is the pressure on taxes? And what's the pressure on the water wastewater rates? Okay, next slide, please. And next slide. So again, the purpose of this exercise was to say, well, if we were to develop these lands ourselves versus losing them through some sort of boundary adjustment. What would we be giving up? So what's the tax revenue? What's the overall impact if we were to develop it, just from a financial perspective? Okay, next slide, please. So what we did was we took a look at two potential areas that were contiguous to or close to the the Berry Boundary. And so on the left side, you'll see that's the residential lands and we took. An estimate of twelve hundred and fifty acres, again, just for purposes of showing what the potential impact would be. And on the non residential side, we looked at lands along the four hundred, again, twelve hundred and fifty acres there. Next slide, please. And so we analyzed a few scenarios. So what if we just developed those residential lands, the twelve hundred and fifty acres? Scenario two said, well, what if we just developed those non residential lands? But non residential lands can develop in a myriad of ways. So let's take a look as if it developed as a business park versus if it developed as one large. Let's say Toyota plant, Amazon plant, something like that. And then the third scenario said, well, what if all of that developed? Okay, and within those both non residential scenarios. Next slide, please. And next slide. So we'll start off with the proposed developing land area and the resulting population and employment we've assumed. Next slide, please. And so if we took a look at twelve hundred and fifty acres of residential land. And we used an assumption of eight units per acre, which is similar to some of the assumptions assumptions used in the Midhurst Secondary Plan. And we took a unit mix, we said, given that, again, we've heard tonight that there's demand for. Low density, medium density units, so single detached, semi detached townhomes, a mix of seventy five percent low density, twenty five percent medium. We come up with about ten thousand units and about just over thirty thousand people. Okay, using those persons per unit assumption that were included in the latest development charges background study. Which are based on stats can information of persons per unit. Next slide, please. When we're looking at the non residential lands, so along the four hundred. If we were potentially to develop this as a business park, what we did was we took a look at some other business parks. In different communities and we took and looked at it and looked at the average area used for. Industrial versus commercial uses, so that we could come up with some assumptions here. And so if we took sixty one percent of that land and use it for industrial. We took a simple lot coverage of twenty five percent of the land is covered by the building, we can estimate the square feet of development. Utilizing the square foot per employee assumptions from the development charge background study, we can estimate employment. And we did the same thing for the commercial as well, to come up with just under fifteen million square feet of non residential building space. And eighteen thousand employees. If it was all to be developed as one big large development, we took a look at the Toyota plant in Cambridge. Had about ten employees per acre. So if we apply that, we can maybe assume twelve thousand five hundred employees. So just two different potential scenarios. Next slide, please. So now let's take a look at the assessment generated and the potential tax revenue from that. Next slide, please. And so the total units of ten thousand, we took a look at what we utilized in the twenty twenty long range financial plan. And the assessment assumptions that were utilized there, considering MPAC hasn't updated assessed value since twenty sixteen. Those numbers would still be relatively similar. We also took a look at some units in the Berry area. And came up with an overall global average of five hundred and thirty thousand per unit. Would generate about five point three billion in assessment revenue, which at the current tax rate would be about twenty three million dollars in taxes generated annually. Next slide, please. So if we were to look at this, the non residential side at the business park. Again, taking some of the assumptions we've utilized from some other business parks across Ontario. We came up with an estimated property tax revenue of about six point five million dollars based on your current tax rates. And if we take a look at the one large development scenario, about four point five million dollars. So it gives us a little bit of a range. Depending on how that could potentially develop. Next slide, please. So this really just summarizes for the different scenarios what the potential tax revenue would be. If, again, we were to develop based on this. So we're looking at a tax revenue per acre about eighteen thousand five hundred for the residential lands. A range of thirty six hundred to fifty two hundred for the non residential. And so together between eleven and just under twelve thousand per acre. Of assessed value generated or tax revenue generated. Next slide, please. So taking a look now at the operating revenues and the operating expenditures. Next slide, please. What we did was we took a look at your financial information return. So every municipality needs to submit. A financial information return to the province. It sets out all of your revenues, expenditures, debt, reserves. T C tangible capital assets, et cetera. All your financial information is laid out in that document and it's standardized across municipalities. And so we took a look at that information. We took a look at the operating costs for all the different services on a per capita, per employee basis. Multiply that by the growth that's anticipated, made some adjustments, you know, there's going to be some efficiencies, some economies of scale and administration, things like that. So that we can estimate what the proposed or the potential operating costs would be for the tax supported services in each scenario. And the rate supported services being water and wastewater. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. So now looking at the capital expenditures and the potential of financing that. And so. The township is unique in its local service policy as part of your development charge background study. In that all of the water and the wastewater infrastructure is a local service, meaning the developers will fund that. And so that's. You know, part of what the Midhurst Landowners Group does is they provide for those agreements separate from the township. And they've serviced the lands at their cost. And so. When we're looking at these costs, what we're trying to do is identify what the potential total capital cost could be. Again, at a high level. So what I did was I took a look at the current costs if we're to service the Midhurst Secondary Plan area. Looked at that on a kind of per capita or per area basis. And then applied that to the potential development here to come up with these capital costs. And so, you know, based on what we heard tonight for for the MLG lands, which again are different areas. You'd want to consider some of this infrastructure. What is the total cost of all the infrastructure? And so not just the the treatment plant expansions, not just the major trunk infrastructure. But we've also estimated what the potential local service would be. So within those subdivisions, going to build the roads, the water, the wastewater mains. Those are then going to be assumed by the township and become your liability to maintain and replace. So we want to incorporate those costs here. Okay, next slide, please. So what we do is we take a look and we say, okay, well, there's some general useful life assumptions that most municipalities utilize. For example, water and wastewater mains typically have a useful life of eighty to a hundred years. And so if we take the cost of the infrastructure and we say, well, in a hundred years, if we apply inflation. What's the amount of money we need to put away every year, which can earn interest? So that we have enough money in the bank account to replace that infrastructure, because that's the true cost of now assuming that infrastructure. And so we can create this annual replacement schedule based on the different scenarios and based on the different services. Now, note, we only looked at the hard services. Again, this was a high level order of magnitude exercise. But if you wanted to do a full financial impact analysis, you'd want to look at all the services. If we're talking about doubling the existing population and adding this area, there's going to be recreation center needs, right? And those come with replacement costs as well, fire servicing needs. All the services required to accommodate new development should be considered as part of a fulsome financial impact analysis. Next slide, please. And next slide. So when we put everything together, what did we see? And so based on these assumptions, again, that will need to be reviewed and vetted as part of any specific development proposal. What we did was we looked at these assumptions and what we came up with was actually a, we show it as a deficit. But what this really means is there's an upward pressure on taxes to support this development. Given the lifecycle costs. And you can see it ranges from, if we look at the residential size, about four point four million annually. Scenario two A, same thing, and then about two point three for scenario two B, if we had one large non res development. And when you put them together, it's about, could be anywhere from seven to eight million dollars annually. Now, this is based on current assumptions. So next slide, please. And it's something we heard today. And it's exactly. What we heard is that, sorry, next slide, please. I'm sorry. And this is the rate supported services, so the water and the wastewater services. You can see again that that potential deficit there. Next slide, please. And so exactly what we heard is we would anticipate. And historically, if we did look at these types of developments and we did have such a healthy industrial ratio. We would typically see a positive impact on the tax base. That is something we traditionally have seen and something that. I've noticed in recent financial impact analyses has started to shift away from. And the major driver, and there's really two drivers here, the first being your industrial tax ratio is low relative to some of the others. And we took a look at the BMA study and you see the average from that study was about two point one eight and yours is at one point one nine. Which reduces how much tax revenue you're getting from industrial development. And that could be done for a number of reasons. But just wanted to look at what the current information was today. And so if you consider changing that, that could change that deficit and start to reduce it. One of the other things we see is a significant cost of infrastructure has increased significantly. And so when we take a look at the Altus Construction Cost Guide. Facilities have increased municipal facilities have increased over a hundred percent, some cases over a hundred and twenty percent over the last eight years. And so when we've done these historically, these analyses, the lifecycle costs that we're looking at. Don't make such a, they hadn't made such a big impact as they do today in when we look at these analyses. And so the higher infrastructure costs, the lower tax ratio combined will create this result. Now, if the tax ratio was increased, it would be slightly more positive. If there's efficiencies in providing servicing and those construction costs could come down. Again, it would make that more beneficial. All of that should be considered as part of a financial impact assessment on any proposal. Next slide, please. And so that was, you know, as part of the caveats to the analysis, again, the intent of this was to give you an order of magnitude. What's the tax revenue potentially lost if if certain areas were. Removed through a boundary expansion. And then any specifics would need further analysis from an engineer to give you some specifics on capital costing, et cetera. Uh, next slide, please. And so this just summarizes those per acre impacts. If we're looking at those residential lands, the tax revenues. About eighteen thousand five hundred per acre. If we combine the res and the non res, it was between eleven and twelve thousand per acre. And the potential net impact on the budget without any intervention, just based on your current information. Would be a potential deficit there. Next slide, please. So lastly, next slide, please. As part of my scope of work, I was to review some boundary agreements throughout the province. And I did review four of these boundary agreements to see some common themes. So. The Saint Thomas and Central Elgin Agreement, Ingersoll and Southwest Oxford, Peterborough and Cavill-Monigan. And Brantford and Brant County. And so really, this was just to highlight some common themes in those. So that if there was some sort of negotiation or discussion occurring, that you would have some idea of what what to be. What will be considered as part of the discussions. And so there's some mix of one time financial compensation. If there's any specific infrastructure that would be, let's say, a road that would be taken into Berry that required some debt. That you still had to pay off. Typically, they would pay off the debt of that road. That's the kind of thing that was included. There's typically some annual financial compensation varies between agreements. Some is in perpetuity, some is phased out. Over a number of years. And so there would be some sort of payment potentially for those undeveloped lands. Reflective on the residential side of a cost per unit and on the non residential side, potentially a percentage of the increased tax revenue from developing that land. There's also other considerations, non financial compensation, things like water and wastewater. But given that you're in a unique position where the development community does provide for the water and the wastewater capacity. That might not be an issue here, but again, something that's considered as part of the agreements. There might be some other terms as well. You know, in one of the examples, it was promised to not annex any more lands for a number of years and that could be a consideration as well. Okay, and next slide, please. I think that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I will turn to members of council for comments or questions. Deputy Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin, and thank you for the presentation. It was very good. Just. We're talking about the deficit there back on slide twenty five. Did it show it going into twenty forty five?
So through the mayor, this analysis, being a high level analysis, is saying if all of the lands were to develop. Here's all the costs, here's all the tax revenues at the end of the day. So this is at the end of it, everything's built out. What would be the impact? You could do a much more detailed analysis, look at it on a cash flow basis annually, but that's a lot more involved level of effort.
Right, but I I guess what I'm I'm asking myself is, were the the input static? To take us to that distance? So there were no changes in any, because right now we actually are in a deficit. For our water and wastewater, we're trying to manage that. So if that's where those numbers started, would that. Play into the final deficit piece as well then, if we already were starting in a deficit situation? Or did you go from base zero specifically to those lands?
Yeah, so through the mayor. So yeah, if you're starting from a deficit and your rates aren't high enough to where they should be. And that could be reflective of why there is a deficit showing in the analysis. And potentially if those rates were increased to a certain point, then this again wouldn't be a deficit. And and all this shows is based on your current rates. Development of this magnitude and with these costs would put upward pressure on those rates. That's all this means.
Thank you.
Counselor Fisher?
I appreciate you saying that. I think it's I think it's also to be noted that twice tonight from two different experts, I've heard that we have. We have a low industrial tax rate, right? And that's something in the future we probably need to see increase. So there's less pressure on it.
Counselor Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin, and thank you, Mr. Abs, for being here and providing this information to council once again. On slide twenty five, you had indicated that the industrial tax rate is one point one nine, I believe it is. And the average in Ontario is two point one eight. Do I have it correct that a further financial impact analysis would be required to determine what our tax rate would need to be to not be in a deficit? Or was that information part of the work that your folks completed?
Mr. Abs?
So through the mayor, so the that was not initially. Uh, so through the mayor, uh so uh the, that was not initially uh undertaken, uh that calculation. Um, I did, because I knew that question was going to come up, uh tried to take a look at, and I not sure where I wrote that down. Uh, but I I did take a look at what that potential impact would be. Uh, so based on the deficit that was identified, um, the potential increase to the tax rate uh would be anywhere from, so for that scenario one, there is the potential deficit, that four point four million. If we take a look at your current FIR, or the most current FIR that was available, um, the tax rate at the time was uh point four zero eight, so lower than what it is in twenty twenty-four. If we add that extra four million dollars or that that extra cost onto the calculations, it would result in a uh an increase to the tax rate about fifteen percent. That's what that equates to, because your current, your budget at the time of the FIR was to recover about sixteen million. Um, and so when we add the uh the expenditures, less those non-tax revenues, um, and then we add the assessment to undertake the calculation, it would be an increase of about fifteen percent on that. And then it ranges in that range between the other scenarios.
Anything further from council? So at this time, mover, anyone, a mover and seconder, please. Counselors Fisher and Thompson, that the presentation from Watson Associates Economists LTD regarding the financial impacts of the Berry Boundary Adjustment be received. All those in favor? And that has carried. We'll move on to five point two. Thank you very much. And I will now call upon Joe Mullen from Ailing Associates to present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council, and members of the public and esteemed colleagues here tonight. Thank you very much for having me here this evening to give you a a high-level overview of the documents, maybe next slide there, sorry, thank you. So these are the documents that you had asked on the June eighteenth council meeting that be referred to Ailing or consulting engineers, myself in particular, to have a review and provide you some back some documentation. I uh, I wasn't sure if I knew, maybe should flip through to towards the end. A lot of my slides you've already seen. Uh, but I also want to thank my colleagues from Geranium and their esteemed associates, allowing me time. I actually did go and open up my laptop, do up a new presentation, and I was going to send it to you, which was peer reviewing, peer reviewing, peer reviewing, but I thought that might not be kosher, so I will try and do it on the fly. Uh, so so the the documents we have here, and before I jump into it, I want to give a little bit of background. There's been lots of talk about history here and history in the township and and knowledge. And and as I said, my esteemed colleagues at Geranium and their associates are extremely knowledgeable, respected individuals in the industry. Uh, we have, I personally have been involved in the Midhurst Secondary Plan. I initiated the phase one and two EA with the, with your township staff at the time, your township council at the time, worked with the partners being Geranium and their associates at the time, or their consultants at the time, worked through all of the to twenty twelve, when you did get it through the Ontario Municipal Board in in particular, then picked up the class EA again in twenty sixteen and pushed it through phase three and phase four to twenty twenty. So so we are quite knowledgeable. Myself in particular have been at many, many number of meetings with both interested parties from your local municipality, agencies from the Ministry of Environment, Narrows, Narrows Saga Valley Conservation Authority. So we have a detailed, in-depth knowledge, myself in particular. As I look at these documents here tonight that were particularly asked to look at being the June twelfth and the the June second and the June thirteenth documents, not only am I able to look at those documents and give you some feedback, I am given the knowledge that have been involved, ongoing involved, has as has been noted uh by Director Harvey, we've been working with the the MLG and their consultants, both on the uh existing facility that's out there, water and wastewater, and the work that they're trying to do to expand the facility. So we have a lot of knowledge, both before this information was actually passed along. So so it's a combination of both the information I'm bringing to the table is both based upon what I see in the documents, but also providing that big picture knowledge that I have from the area and also in in the thirty-five years in the industry. So maybe a next slide on it. Well, basically, my proposal here tonight was to walk through each of the particular pages and documents that I refer to. I've I've, to trying to keep it in context and keep it, keep it, given that the documents are a hundred and fifty-five pages plus, uh as opposed to referring to a document you may not have in front of you, I tried to cut and paste each of the little components and then give you my comments and feedback, and hopefully at the end of the day, you can make educated decisions. And that's my purpose here tonight to try and hopefully help you and make those educated decisions. So so on page five of of the first June second uh letter from Mr. Steinberg on behalf of the MLG, there was a couple of high-level statements made, both about the water wastewater being capable of servicing it and about the wastewater or the influent going into the, to the effluent going into the uh Willow Creek, being able to be accommodate the expanded areas. Whilst we know there is potential expansion possibilities, the documentation that has not only has been submitted here, but the documentation that has been prepared to date does not justify those high-level statements, in my opinion. And I will sort of get into a little bit more detail on that. That's not to say that there can't be expansions done to some of these facilities. However, there is orders of magnitude, and I will try and touch upon some of those as we walk through here tonight. Uh, next slide, please. So now we're going to get into some, a little bit of the details. First of all, on wastewater. So on page four or five of that uh uh document from TY Lin, which is basically third, page thirty-three of a hundred and fifty-five. So this was a sub-sub-report from Tyway Lin on the, on the wastewater servicing. So it talked about the existing employment areas not having residual capacity. And I know my associates in their peer review of my peer review uh did provide some additional comments. But what I would like to say, you know, that there are employment lands from new developments in Miners, and therefore it not needing capacity, I think, is a, is a misjudgment if you were to move forward in that. You should have employment lands that are appropriately serviced. There are lots of employment lands throughout Simcoe County and some of the rural areas that are not serviced with heavy water and wastewater, and they're still sitting relatively vacant. Uh, so I would recommend that that you look at, that we do look at having appropriate allocations for your employment lands. I would also note that if we look at areas like Collingwood and uh and um Newtacum South, which are in Simcoe County, uh you obviously all sit around the county table, sorry, some of you sit at the county table on those, with those individuals. And they have employment areas, but they have employment areas that have very large water and wastewater usage needs. But I'll, but the benefit that gives them is then a large employment basis, obviously, a new to come so with Honda, but not only Honda, but with all the spin-off industries, but they have a very large water wastewater need associated with that employment land. So what we've allowed, what we've just did, a high-level assumption uh in 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 response to the comment that there was no, there would not be any need for a water wastewater, we looked at, uh and as was noted, many years ago, probably twenty-plus years ago, the ministry had made a guideline or suggested a guideline of between twenty-five and fifty-five cubic meters of wastewater per hectare for new development area, greenfield development areas, which are these are. So I I assumed, let's take the low of that number, calculated an area for this area based upon the Malone Parsons given uh memo that identifies eight hundred and ninety-five gross development hectares in that particular area around the four hundred. So I would, we've calculated that would have a capacity of twenty-two thousand and three hundred and seventy-five cubic meters of wastewater capacity. Keeping in mind that your current plant, the EA for the current plant is ultimately full buildout is twelve thousand. I know there was comments made earlier by my associates that know they're seeing more and more dry industry. I counter that. In fact, I have a number of things that I would highlight. One made by Dr. uh Franklin, the esteemed individual as he was referred to. The area in Woodstock that he referred to, which had uh brought in the Toyota plant. I mean, that, if it's a dry industry, you wouldn't be able to attract something like that, so you need to have it fully serviced. I also look at, the regional airport was also referenced in the discussions earlier. One of the challenges the county have, and and two of you think are very familiar with that, is that they've got employment land there, but no water wastewater servicing, and therefore no uptake. It's not happening because they need water wastewater. Your two competitors, immediately north and immediately south, City of Viralia and the City of Berry, require twenty-eight cubic meters per hectare for water and wastewater servicing of any of their employment lands. So using those guidelines, I would say there is going to be a number needed, whether it's twenty-five or slight different number because it's such a large area. But to assume it's going to be zero, I think would be an extreme, extreme, extreme underestimation and could end up with you having employment land that is not available because you don't have, you're not able to accommodate an F and P that's in Tottenham, you're not able to accommodate some of the large industries around Collingwood, et cetera, et cetera. Moving on then to the next table, I'm sort of taking that one step further. So on next slide, sorry. Uh, next slide actually as well, too, I apologize. So table three point two on page four of five of the TY Len memorandum as well. So that's in that same memorandum, same page. So that, this table, they present, sort of surmises and and puts together all of the wastewater capacity from these expanded lands. And it identifies a number of average daily flow, which is what the capacity of a wastewater treatment plant is uh, is identified at, is the ADF flow. And it identifies that the existing is being approximately nine thousand cubic meters. The expanded, or the existing MSP plus the potential expansion areas would be eighteen thousand. If we include the number that I've just referenced for that employment area, that new number would be forty-one thousand cubic meters of an average daily flow of wastewater capacity for that facility, which, as I've noted or alluded to earlier, the existing facility has ultimate capacity of twelve point three. So we're approximately three and a half times larger than the existing system uh identified. Another note that I want to touch upon, and I will try and touch upon it later, but it is very, very important here, too. I've heard a lot of talk, and I think it's a very important critical item for you on your table, is the servicing of the Bayfield Corridor. The servicing of the Bayfield Corridor, I know there's lots of talks about running pipes up to the MZO lands and the benefit of having those pipes there. There is no capacity in these numbers for the Bayfield lands, the Bayfield Corridor lands. I've heard, I think it was your Director of Planning identified approximately seven hundred to eight hundred units of intensification along that corridor. So that's going to have an obviously an additional uh wastewater need that's not in any of these tables here. Yes, the pipes would be running past it, but there would be no capacity available to have a a redevelopment, a a three-story walk-up conduit, commercial development, et cetera. So there wouldn't, that is not in here either. So that would be in addition, not only to the numbers that are presented in the TY Len's memo, in addition to the numbers that I'm revising, but actually in addition to both those numbers. So. Next slide. The next item I want to just touch upon is the the discharging of the wastewater into Willow Creek. So on page six of twelve of that memorandum on page, which is basically page forty of, page six of twelve of Hutcheson's memorandum, which is page forty of the hundred and fifty-five, it talks about the full build-out with, of the ultimate facility. So that's the revised facility we talked about on the previous uh document, being approximately eighteen thousand, that it could be done in one of two ways. And I know there was further comments made this evening, and I will try and touch upon those in a moment. But that it could be done either with some additional treatment and or of holding of flows. I'll deal with the last one first. The holding of flows is is a, as it was maybe even alluded to, is a non-starter because of the magnitude of the flows that would have to be held and the magnitude of the facility that would have to be constructed to hold those flows. So that's, I'm sorry, but just a non-starter. The discharge of the effluent into the creek. Now, if we're talking about a slight increase in the facility from twelve to eighteen, which maybe not even is a slight increase, but I believe it's it's more in the order of twelve to thirty, forty. That is a large increase, so that's going to be a significant additional, particularly phosphorus going into Willow Creek. And yes, it was alluded to tonight that there possibly of doing offsets, uh phosphorus offsets in other areas and stormwater areas. And have, we have been very successful, the MLG in particular, have been very successful in doing that. But that also would require policy changes, and I do not believe there's been, and policy changes at the ministry level, not at the Conservation Authority, at the ministry level. And I do not believe there's been any of those discussions to date. So again, a concern, as I've alluded to, that if we have to up the treatment area, the treatment in this facility, the next level of treatment is reverse osmosis and and that type of treatment, extremely, extremely expensive, not only to purchase but to operate because of the power consumptions associated with it. So that's why that level of technology is extremely rare in candidate issues in some of the areas in the US and some of areas in Asia and in uh Australia, but not in many, not in many areas of Canada, that extreme level of treatment technology. So again, some concerns with the direction given there tonight. Uh, next slide. Further, yeah, so this next slide is the component I've just touched about there, the the holding back of some of the flows. I think we can pass through that. Next slide. So now I'm moving into the water servicing. So again, uh TY Lin have looked at a memorandum of looking at these expanded area and the amount of water that might be required and uh where we could find that, or if we could find that water. Again, the the big area of deficit that I see in in the calculations is the non-inclusion of employment lands. Again, that large area of employment adjacent to Highway four hundred, there is basically zero allowance for water uh in that area of needing water, because the assumption is that the employees will work in Miders. I think that is a, not a very good assumption to make, shall we say. So again, we've assumed an analysis of using the low end of the ministries, number twenty-five cubic meters. Again, keeping in mind the City of Berry, City of Viralia, use twenty-eight cubic meters for employment lands and commercial lands and other areas, and then a max day factor. We have calculated that an additional area, next slide, sorry. An additional area, a capacity of six hundred and seventy liters per second would be required for the, instead of two hundred and four. So an additional, significant additional amount of water would be required. So when that's combined with uh the area that's there, that is a significant amount. Right now, we know in the Midhurst, on the Duran roadside, we're we're ultimately going to find, and we have found through the Midhurst Secondary Plan, a hundred and thirty-two liters of second of water coming out of the ground. So this is well capacity coming out of the ground. And as we know, we can build infrastructure above the ground, but it is much tougher to find water in the ground. We have to be very selective in areas. So finding this additional water, a total water of six hundred and seventy liters a second would be, could be very, very challenging. Uh, next slide. So again, just to wrap it up on the water. So in the Midhurst EA, we identified eleven new wells to provide you a water of two hundred and nine liters per second. That both the Carson Road area and the Duran Road area. So that's a combination of eleven new wells, six in the Duran Road area and five in the Carson area to find you two hundred liters, two hundred and nine liters per second. With this expanded area, including that employment area, at least at the number we've used, you would need a total of nine hundred and seventeen liters per second. So basically over four times that. Keeping, keeping in mind that two hundred liters a second, we have eleven wells. The 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 math is 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 easy to calculate how many wells that would be. It's going to be a lot. Uh, to date, there's been no additional hydrology work done to say, yes, Joe, we can go into this area. We've done some analysis. We can drill another forty liter a second well, or another fifty liter a second well, or another eighty liter a second. So that work has not been done. I I know the MLGF said that they're willing to work with that, but basically the information that I've reviewed, we're reviewed. It hasn't been done yet. Uh, next slide. Moving on then to the servicing, and I know my associates talked about this as well. The servicing of of how do we get that? Uh, initially, it was identified that in in the materials of of extending a pipe. Uh, but it also talks about the the servicing that was done by my associates at SCS didn't look at, I don't believe, looked at the big picture of these massive pieces of infrastructure, employment lands in particular, on the extremity of your Midhurst Secondary Plan and needing wastewater that's going to be serviced via the you, the campus, the utility campus on on Snow Valley Road. That's a a large distance that the wastewater will have to travel. Yes, those pipes are being constructed by our friends at uh Midhurst Heights right now. However, those pipes will definitely not be large enough to service an area that would require that amount of capacity. So there would have to be larger pipes. That's not inconceivable. That's not not doable. It's just more infrastructure. So that's some of the numbers that I'll touch upon in a few moments, where I came up with some of the bigger picture numbers as opposed to some of the numbers that were referenced. Uh, so that's that. Next slide. So moving on then to the the future growth, uh page three of the phase two heading onto the June fourth memorandum. So since there's been work ongoing on the facility, and this is the existing facility. Now, this is the the phase one slash phase two, whatever we want to start calling it. Uh, the facility that has been tendered, and we acknowledge that has been tendered by TY, or sorry, designed by TY Lin in conjunction with township and Ailing staff, and we've got a great design package. The MLG then went out to tender with that, and that's the hundred and sixty million dollar plus tender that has come back. We understand that now that that cannot be awarded due to financial constraints, and we cannot understand those financial constraints in this market. Uh, so we are looking and working with the MLG to de-scope. And when I say de-scope, it's basically reduce the package, try and still give us capacity and allocation, to give you capacity and allocation for new development units, but not build that hundred and sixty million dollar facility. And as we understand it, and I think it's even been alluded to tonight, that target is in the eighty to ninety million dollar range, and that includes your huge funding application uh monies. The challenge we have is that we are still working, we we are still working through that. I know it's been referenced tonight that, yes, that contract has been awarded, and I don't doubt that. However, we are still working with the contractor, the MLG and the consultants, and obviously your township staff, on exactly what that package is going to look like. Uh, particularly on, I know there was reference tonight on the tertiary membranes and that there would be packaged plants put in. Uh, I'll be honest, that is concerning. We initially started with an interim phase one plant, an interim plant in twenty twenty-one, that it was a packaged plant that had interim facilities, uh membranes in particular. There is some discussion, but the discussion is still ongoing between the parties. But there is discussion that this But there is discussion that this this long-term facility that may be sitting there for the next thirty to forty years will have temporary interim packaged plants that basically have a lifespan of five to eight to ten years and have to be replaced and or upgraded. So that is concerning. But we're still working through that with the MLG and their consultants. So that, based upon all that information, I am not able to confirm that this new facility that I understand is going to go to construction this fall and has to be completed by March of twenty twenty-eight, because that's when your Hughes funding must be utilized, that that facility at that point in time will have a capacity of four thousand, which is referenced in the document. If it is going to be, which I think has been alluded to, if it is going to be phased and and membranes put in and packages, then the capacity is the weakest link. And if the weakest link is your membranes or the limiting, not the weakest, wrong word. Limiting factor is your membranes in that facility. That's the capacity you have. If there's capacity in the membranes for eight hundred cubic meters, that's the capacity of that facility, regardless of what the headworks are, regardless of what the secondary works are, regardless of what all the other components are. So that is why I am unable to confirm to you what I believe the capacity will be, because we're still working with the MLG and their consultants on that. Next slide. Actually, you can go to the next slide as well. So on this one, on the future growth, so on page four of six on 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 the June thirteenth letter. So there is a little table that's put in there that identifies the flows, both on the combined facility for twenty twenty-eight and then on a post-monitoring facility for twenty twenty thirty-two. Again, this is somewhat reiterating. So the four hundred, four thousand units is based upon the agreed upon per capita flow of three hundred and fifteen. We have worked with the MLG in the past year, reduced the number that was in the EA of four thirty and acknowledged that, yes, the flows are lower. We've said, let's look at three fifteen. Everyone's agreed to that. The facility is working towards that. However, there, we allowed the interim facility that's out there today because of financial constraints, because of the, where the market is today and that there's, as we've heard from your directors, there's not been an awful lot of homes sold, that we can live with the interim facility on a shorter term period at a reduced flow because we know we're coming, the the ultimate facility or the phase one facility is coming. It is, it is scheduled to be constructed and built in twenty twenty-eight. Therefore, we will allow for a short-term risk. But we have not agreed to the larger ultimate facility in the post thirty twenty thirty-two time, having these reduced flows. The challenge of having these reduced flows is that if you, if your facility, because you will be owners and operators of this facility, if the flows coming into this facility are over and above or outside the effluent requirements, the discharge, whether it be the phosphorus, whether it be any of the other nutrients that are being discharged into Willow Creek. If if you're running this too close to the limit and you get over the limit, the ministry issue an order. You are actually charged with a charge for discharging non-treated, non-appropriately treated effluent into the Willow Creek. So that's the concern with running these numbers too close and then the challenge that we're, the ministry themselves recommend that they would like to see three to five years of actual data before they do adjustments. In this case, we've even reduced the numbers without that data, but we're not agreeing to reduce the numbers in the future. So caution again has been concerned, has been expressed, that when there's numbers of five thousand six hundred units being posted on a table, which may seem great, we don't believe that actually maybe there will be there or definitely cannot be definitely that it will be there. Next slide. Carrying on from that then, so the next, the next table or within that same table that talks about that in the post twenty twenty-eight, you know, that what would happen when we include the phase one or was referred to previously, the interim facility. Again, that interim facility has fifteen twenty-nine units. We have agreed to that capacity. The four thousand, that's the number that is still unsure, in my opinion. So then adding all these numbers up is is again, I think, is being a little very risky in that we, none of this has been proven yet. And so I would suggest extreme caution in accepting and living with these numbers at this point in time without having, without having that detailed information. And next slide. So just again, some of this to previously noted, some of this I've talked about, the two twenty-five I've talked about. Uh, phase one, the other point I wanted to make on the phase one, the interim, or as I said, it's been interim facility referred to. It initially was designed and constructed to be an interim facility. I know it has been confirmed with the MLG tonight that it will be there, it will be yours, but it was never intended, and then I don't believe it's been agreed to, that it's going to be part of your facility. You may utilize it, you and and or others that have been referenced, may utilize that facility for other things, whether it be septicage, whether it be other things. But at this point in time, there is no, there's no agreement that it could be identified and utilized for residential homes capacity. And as sort of has been alluded to in some of these tables, uh, that basically that's that. Next slide. So back, so now the the component, the next two next slides are the servicing components, one of the employment lands. So the the cost and was identified in in these two tables, uh, the page four of six on on the June thirteenth of the fifteen million dollars to service the employment lands. And I know it's been alluded to and verified tonight that, yes, that's only the pipes. But in the reality is that the pipes are the cheap part, and I'll talk about it a little bit more when I get into Bayfield. The real capacity, as I've alluded to, is on the sewage treatment and the water capacity. Those are the real, real costs and the real challenges for you. Running some pipes out and spending fifteen million dollars, you know, for an employment area of that that size is relatively small. But it does not look at the existing infrastructure, i.e. all the way across town that I've alluded to. These force mains that are currently being constructed would not be large enough. The sewage pumping station that's being constructed would not be large enough. The treatment plant that is contemplated would definitely not be large enough. So there's mega other expansions that would be necessary. So that's where my number at a very, very high level, two hundred million dollars is coming from, because we know a sewage plant alone, for example, the sewage plant to service the employment lands that I've referenced here is bigger than the one that we've just tendered. And the one we just tendered was a hundred and sixty million. Now, I know a lot of that is 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 expandable, but it is going to be mega money. So that's where our number of, a very high level number of two hundred million is probably a more wholesome picture to service those employment lands. That'll include pipes, it'll include water storage reservoirs, it'll include treatment, it'll include finding new wells, all of that. That actually is a hard cost to service the development. Next slide. Similar discussion now just on the Bayfield corridor area. So again, the fifteen million dollars that has been identified is really the cost to run the pipes from Snow Valley Road up to the top of the hill or up onto the hill to service the two MZO lands. And yes, that is identified and there would be a benefit. Those pipes would service that Bayfield corridor that you want to develop. However, the key part is this fifteen million is only the pipes. It's not the sewage treatment plant capacity. It's not the water capacity. It's not the reservoirs. It's not the pumping stations. Not only for the MZO lands, but not, most importantly, not for the Bayfield corridor lands. In fact, even the numbers, as I've alluded to earlier, that have been presented, nowhere are the the Bayfield corridor numbers included in your water and wastewater capacity numbers. So again, that number that at a very, very high level, I would, we've estimating that would be in the order of a hundred million to service those now corridor lands. And you worship, that concludes my presentation. I'll open up for questions.
Thank you. Counsel, I will have Amoober at secondary to get it on the floor, and then we will begin our questions. I have councillor Garwood and councillor Alexander. That the, next one. At the presentation from Ainsley Group regarding the peer review of the Midhurst Landowner Group materials related to water and wastewater servicing of an expanded Midhurst Secondary Plan be received. And at this time, I will turn for comments and questions. Deputy Cabral.
Thank you. I'll take your shot. Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and through you, Mr. Mullin. The additional figures, I understand them, like as far as, you know, the treatment of the actual water, the wells, subsidiary systems for holding and retaining water and pumps. How does it work when you have a cross-border servicing piece? Do they also have to pay for that enhanced, you know, piece of the pie for the allocation? Like, if you get what I'm saying, like, they would have to pay for that on the Berry side, would they not?
Mr. Mullin.
Yeah, and you worship through to Deputy Mayor Cabral. Very good question. And I would assume, I'm not involved in any of those discussions, but I would assume that in the servicing that through the cross-border boundary and and from my experience in other municipalities, there would have to be some allocation, either for wastewater capacity, infrastructure, linear infrastructure and others, whether that be through a development charges, because in essence, uh, development charges are in essence are generally to cover wastewater treatment, water treatment, linear pipes, et cetera. So whether it be a direct charge for those components or whether it be through a development charges. But I would assume, again, not being involved, I would assume for the servicing through the cross-border that there would be costs associated with servicing those lands.
Okay, thank you. And that kind of brings me to another, another piece. I don't know the exact figures, but DCs. And this may be one of the reasons why, you know, the landowners are a little bit more interested in staying in Springwater Township while they get their cross-border servicing from elsewhere is because the DCs in the city of Berry are over a hundred thousand dollars. The DCs in Springwater Township are fifty-eight thousand roughly. I don't know the exact number, and that's from a regional survey. I don't know if they're for this year, if they were for last year. So if we looked at that number and then looked at the amount of DCs that would be charged, say for the Sadland Village, the numbers that they tossed us at the the very beginning when they made their presentation, I would hazard just, the numbers were higher than, say, thirteen or fourteen thousand. I don't know what the exact number was, but if you take twelve thousand or even one thousand and you multiply it by the number of DCs, we're talking millions of dollars that then would be available to provide those upgrades and provide some of that infrastructure. Would that be correct?
Yeah, you worship through to Deputy Mayor Cabral. Yes, I mean, obviously, if those lands were paying either a DC or playing a certain amount through the MLG, that money obviously could be utilized to to build the infrastructure and et cetera.
Yeah, it's just, I I realized that it's a bit of a unique situation where the Midhurst Landowners Group is actually pretty well in charge of everything wastewater, the whole shoot and match. And, you know, they're working with them and they're working with our township staff. And my next question, I guess I'm going to send it over to our our staff through you, Mayor Coglan, to either Director Russell, I guess. We don't have any real numbers on what the city of Berry is in a position to provide, do we? Because we have a lot of information from Midhurst Landowners Group. We also have information now from Mr. Mullin. But we really don't have anything from a council perspective, what what the city of Berry might be able to provide or if they can provide it.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and through you to the deputy mayor.
Planner Russell, before you begin, I just want to remind that there are, there's two avenues of conversations happening right now. One is in a facilitated process and is closed session. So I just want to be mindful that until the facilitator allows us to make that public. Director Russell.
Thank you, and well received. I was going to go a different route in that I I'm, as a planner, I don't want to really speak too much to the engineering of what capacities are available from the city of Berry side. But that's where I would probably defer to my colleagues here.
Director Harvey.
Through you, Mayor Coglan, to Deputy Mayor. We haven't got confirmation on those capacities at this time. I think that's something that'll come through the facilitator process, and at this point in time, we're not privy to any additional information on that.
Yeah, I mean, thank you very much. I just a comment there from my perspective is it makes it very, very difficult when we have information over here is willingly provided. Mr. Mullin, I know you spent time on this just to review the stuff, also, you know, providing his time and and council here having an opportunity to take it all in, and there's a substantial amount of information available. And yet, from the other side of the coin, even from the landowners who are looking for this, we're not getting anything really from them. I mean, other than the delegations that they made and the presentations that they made when the MZOs were endorsed at that time. I've not heard anything from them, except just some information on tonight's agenda. But thank you.
Councillor Fisher.
Thank you. I think what I take from this tonight is that we are having a peer review of a peer review, right? So, and but I I I actually see opportunity in it, you know, I see that that to the deputy mayor's point, we have a lot of information coming forward right here within Springwater. And and when I listen to all parties, I I see that it's a bit of a Rubik's Cube of a problem, but it's one that we can solve internally, I believe. And also, when I take a look at at what the alternative would be, we have no information from Berry, except that it likely can't happen, right? And we would be left with less overall. I don't believe that they can help us develop all of the Bayfield Street corridor as well. So as much as, you know, there are some doubts and some questioning of it, I welcome it. I think that it allows us to work through these things collaboratively with the Midhurst Landowners Group, our staff, consultants. But I still see opportunity in it, and I still see that that we can find a solution. And again, I don't think any, and I'm, I think you probably agree, I don't think there was any growth in any municipality that didn't come without some sort of collaborative approach, but hardships, putting our heads together. But I do believe that if we, if we have the Remingtons and Sadlands on board and paying in, we can build that infrastructure in that area. But it's not without its problems, but let them be our problems to solve, not problems that belong to the city of Berry on our doorstep.
Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. So through the chair to Mr. Mullin, thank you for coming tonight. You've been very clear. And as you always are, I'm grateful to have your expertise at our fingertips anytime I've called you. You've been very, very help me, helpful in helping me understand these matters. One of the things that's come up in question tonight is the city Berry and their ability to keep their commitment and service Sadland and Remington. Do you have any doubts that Berry's offer and commitment to service these lands, that they can actually do what they say they're going to do?
Mr. Mullin.
Mayor Coglan, through you to to councillor Thompson. Unfortunately, I am not aware or knowledgeable on the city of Berry, in particular on the wastewater capacity and or their collection system, nor I'm involved in any of the ongoing discussions. So I would have to defer to others on that, given that I am not personally involved with any of that infrastructure. So I can't really comment whether they could or couldn't.
Councillor Garwin.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Through you to Director Harvey or Director Russell. Just regarding the Hughes funding, I know there's been mention, not just tonight, but in meetings past as well regarding that. While council's fully aware of what the Hughes funding is and how it's applicable towards the plant, I think it might be useful just to provide a bit of a summary as well.
Director Harvey.
Yeah, through you, Mayor Coglan. So obviously, the Hughes funding is a potential for us that we've been accepted to get up to thirty-five million of funding for the expansion of the ultimate treatment plant. As Joe Mullin and others and distinguished colleagues here with the MLG have outlined, we're at a point now where they're hoping to award this. It's time sensitive. As outlined, we need to break ground in September of this year in twenty twenty-five. And we, we need to deliver this infrastructure by March of twenty twenty-eight. That's the timeframe that the province has put to let us use the funding for this. I think we need to have further discussions. And then as I've outlined to council previously, we'll need a separate agreement as it relates to the Hughes funding in my estimation. And I think that based on that, that will have to be worked out with the MLG as to how that funding is used. There's been some references here that, you know, as it outlines that what's being awarded or what isn't on the plant. I think it needs to be very clear that the province has outlined to me that the the funding should be used as a cost recovery mechanism and not as a potential for award of a particular contract. And that's what I see is a little bit of the language that I'm seeing here. The Hughes funding is, will be a flow-through mechanism and a cost recovery mechanism is how the province outlines to me, based on the infrastructure being completed. So in other words, we'll need to show documentation that we've completed a certain amount of work before we'll be eligible for funding and a cost recovery. So I just want to be clear with council that those things will be coming forth, and we'll also have to have an agreement between ourselves and the landowners group as it relates to the funding and any kind of, you know, what would I say, conditions related to it, whatever council would like in exchange for some of that funding and the work that's going to be involved by staff and others to administer that, it will involve finance department and others. So I think council needs to know that there'll be work involved from the township to administer that funding. At this point, just so you know, the transfer payment agreement has not been confirmed with the province. We're still working through that. But we're hopeful that we'll see that soon.
Anything further? Well, and then councillor Langley.
This, actually, just sitting here thinking about everything that's come through and the reports and all that stuff. Through you, Mayor Coglan, to Mr. Mullin, and I do appreciate your knowledge, Mr. Mullin. Having listened to everything that's gone on, given the situation where we were ground zero, Springwater's integrity is intact. given the situation where we were ground zero, Springwater's integrity is intact, would we be able to develop on our own? And would we be able to service the areas that we were developing on our own? In a hypothetical sense? Because I kind of get the sense that we're maybe not at that stage. Does it just mean that we need to build more?
Mr. Mullen.
Mayor Coglan, if I can try to answer that question as best as I can, the challenge we have, and maybe I'll set the stage a little bit and then I'll try and answer your question. We were asked, again, I know it's been acknowledged much different times, but we were asked collectively, we were asked, council was asked in 2008, 2009 to approve the Midhurst Secondary Plan. We had to do four years' worth of work to satisfy the powers to be at the time, and those were provincial powers, Conservation Authority powers, et cetera, to whereby we got, including your public's concerns and environmental group's concerns. And we got to that level to do that. Is it possible? Being an engineer, I'd say anything's possible. Is there a cost to that? Absolutely. Is it viable? I mean, will we need, you know, would there need to be changes to provincial legislation? Possibly, yes. Anything is possible, but is it, is it the timeframe and the challenge, you know, that I would reference and I acknowledge times are different than, and they were in 2009. There's a, there's a lack, a severe shortage of homes, a provincial government that is pushing us all to get more homes. But that, the challenge we have there is making sure we do it. I think it's been commented on earlier by one of you, making sure we do it smartly and correctly. You do it smartly and correctly, sorry, that I give you advice. So you do it smartly and correctly for your residents and your future residents and your future generations, you know, in the best interest of everyone, whether that be servicing A or B from A or B location. If that, sorry if it's a little bit of a rambid by question, but answer, sorry.
Counselor Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I just wanted to comment on the Hughes funding piece. Thank you, Director Harvey, for kind of walking us through it. I think it's important to note the time constraints, clearly. We have a September twenty twenty-five date, we have a twenty twenty-eight date that need to be met. And I think, to me, this whole discussion, the peer review, the peer review, and peer review, however we want to call this, is how we're going to get there. We have all of the partners at the table between the MLG group, between Ainsley, between our staff. This gives us the opportunity, the knowledge, which everybody brings different things to the table, and there's always room for interpretation. And, you know, I appreciate, Mr. Mullen, the cautious approach. That's, to me, that is what we pay you for, is a cautious approach. And then you can balance that with, you know, another approach. And I think this is how we get and make those dates, because otherwise, on our own, I don't see how we're going to do that. And then we would just lose the funding and that would be a shame.
Counselor Moore.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Coglan, to Mr. Mullen. Thank you again for being here. I think the best thing that I heard was that this started in 2008 and 2009 and through perseverance and challenges and working together, look what we've been able to accomplish. So are there bumps along the way? Of course there are. And a conversation that you and I had not long ago, I said, is this doable? You said, yeah, there's challenges, but it's doable. Is there challenges for the city Berry? Of course there are. And, but I prefer that you work with the Springwater Township staff and partners like you have all along so successfully. So, thank you.
Counselor Fisher.
I think this entire discussion is really with the backdrop of annexation, right? So I think the real discussion is, do we want to find, and I keep saying, spring water solution, or do we want to be annexed? The vast majority of people in the, in Springwater do not want to be annexed. They want us to find a solution. So going back to what Counselor Moore said, everyone in this room's been working well for well over a decade, right? So are there going to be trials and tribulations? Absolutely. But I think there are bigger pitfalls if we look to annexation. So I actually have extreme confidence in Ainsley, in the MLG, in all of our partners, that it won't be easy, but we can find a solution. And I think it's better for Springwater overall, whether it's our taxation, DC collection, you know, makers of our own destiny, just not to be too philosophical. But we are better off with this solution versus, I'll call it, throwing our hands up in the air and allowing ourselves to be annexed.
Anything, Counselor Garwin?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and thank you, Mr. Mullen, for being here. As always, I think our entire council is very much appreciative for your counsel and for being a great resource for this township for many decades. While I don't disagree with the perspective that Counselor Fisher has presented, just saying we can come up with a solution doesn't actually come up with a solution. It sounds great on paper and it sounds great at a council meeting. It sounds great on a clip on CTV, but the reality is it's not a solution. So while some believe the perspective is to throw your hands in the air, I also see a certain fraction of putting our heads in the sand and not actually seeking out this information. It's taken us two years to get to where we are. And I know some might say, but that's not a long time. We've been going through this since 2008. That's a fine perspective. But again, as to what Counselor Alexander noted, we have timelines. They are here, they are on our doorstep. The information here today, while yes, it is incredibly helpful to have some clarity, there are discrepancies. I'm not saying that one information is incorrect and one is correct, but there are discrepancies. And those discrepancies need to be put out into the public as they are now. And I think that's what many members of this council have been asking for now for a very long time, is for this to be an open and transparent process. And that's what we have. Is it messy? Yes. Is it maybe cleaner and tidier and other municipalities that are going through a similar matter? Maybe so, because it's behind closed doors. But we ask for it to be in the public. So it is messy, yes, but this, the public needs to be able to hear this and have the truth before any decisions are made. So, Mr. Mullen, I appreciate you being here. I appreciate MLG being here. I appreciate all the experts in the room tonight being here because I'm not an engineer, I don't pretend to be one, and I don't pretend to be an expert on this, so thank you.
Thank you. I think at this time I'll turn to members of council. Any closing remarks, Mr. Mullen?
No, your worship, and just thank you very much for, again, for the opportunity to come here and speak. And I look forward to working with you as we move forward in whichever direction it may be.
Thank you. So, council, I do have that move and seconded. All those in favor? And that has carried. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you very much.
Are you wanting now or after? Okay. So we will now move on to our question period, and I will turn to Clerk, and I do know that there has been requests for a bio break. I will give it to the discretion, and I know that we have a lot of members here that are probably willing to ask questions, so if we can hang tight. I will turn to Clerk Marshall to identify the registered question.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. We had one question period submission this evening for Naomi McPhee, who is virtual with us this evening. So I would just ask Deputy Clerk Reimer to promote her to make her question period submission, please. Thank you.
Hi there, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Do you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can, if you could begin with your name and address, please.
Sure, Naomi McPhee, four three three four Line Six North Oromadonte.
And proceed.
I'm actually here to speak on behalf of my clients who live at three zero eight Miller Drive in Springwater. They are the owners of the property in which I'm speaking about. I am, I'd like to respectfully request that their property be included in the proposed city of Berry boundary expansion. As outlined on the township's website, facilitated discussions between Springwater, Berry, and other regional partners remain underway. Work completed to date, including a joint land needs analysis, has identified areas for further detailed evaluation in Stage Three. Under current preliminary mapping, the boundary extension would stop just before three zero eight Miller Drive, which is at their driveway, leaving it outside the annexation area. However, operational realities on the ground already align this service-wise with the city of Berry. Both garbage collection and winter road maintenance for this address are already being handled by Berry, not Springwater. Allowing this boundary line to cut off at the driveway does not reflect how services are already being delivered. From a practical, administrative, and fiscal standpoint, one, service consistency, ensuring the property is formally part of Berry, will align legal jurisdiction with existing operational reality, eliminating confusion around maintenance, responsibility, and service billing. Two, efficient governance. Municipal administration will be simpler and more transparent for both residents and staff when service boundaries align with municipal boundaries. And three, community integration. Including three zero eight Miller Drive in the annexation will support a seamless transition for the property owners into Berry's service model, complementing the phased-in taxation, recreational access, and other benefits proposed. My clients understand that Springwater Council has not yet finalized the lands to be included as Stage Three of the analysis is underway. Given that operational alignment is already present, we respectfully recommend and ask that council direct staff to include three zero eight Miller Drive in the next mapping update under review. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McPhee. And I will turn to the, and there are no more registered. So at this time, we will open up for question period and come on forward.
Mayor, council.
I'm just going to ask you to speak as close into the mic as you can and to start with your name and address.
I live at seven sixteen St. Vincent Street. I was one of the people that put a letter in asking to get servicing from Berry. I have sixty acres. The services are right at my lot line, sixty houses back on. The city Berry in the insight twenty-five years ago, excuse me, left a road allowance with a master sewer trunk right there. I also have access on St. Vincent Street for traffic or for any kind of services somebody want to put through. Now, the way development charges go, when you pay a development charge to the city of Berry, you're paying money into something, part of that development charge goes into a sewer plant. The two billion dollar sewer plant, it's already there. You just hook in. When you go get a building permit now, you don't pay for your development charge now until after, because things are slow until the unit's closed. So if Springwater had a billion-dollar plant over here and pipes running all over the place, and I wanted to put a subdivision here or build a house here, I could hook in there, I paid my hundred grand, boom, I can build my house. I get my building permit, away we go. That plant's already there. It's not some pie in the sky plant where you're going to dig up Midhurst one more time to build a bigger pipe, to build another ten thousand and another ten thousand houses. Now, if you want to do that, that's great. That stuff's not going to get built. Paul Sadlin, Remington, myself, Sean Mason, and all the guys that put these letter in, supporting having servicing from Berry for that Bayfield Street corridor, we want the servicing. They're not going to spend a hundred, they say a hundred million, the gentleman from Ainsley, it's going to be a hundred and fifty million. And they're not going to spend a hundred and fifty million dollars to put a pipe to service a hundred and fifty acres. It's a million dollars an acre. The fellow I'm sitting with, he owns the hotel, four acres. He's not going to spend four million dollars to hook into a pipe on Bayfield Street. So we got to get our heads around this. I don't know what people that Phil's talking to. I drive by his house, he's got top annexation.
I'm just going to ask you.
Oh, Counselor Fisher. Because when he came to our door and asked us to vote for him, he was pro-development. Now he's anti-development, he's anti, what is Springwater actually giving away? They're giving away some land that will never be serviced over by the hospital, to Berry. And they're giving away land? Well, they already own a lot of land around the, around the Little Lake, except for they don't own the golf course. And people assume Berry Golf Course in Berry, it's actually in Springwater. And then you come across, and all the land was, was taken out of the secondary plan when they did the secondary plan. Everybody thought, well, when I bought that property twenty-five years ago, I realized that this is, this is what it is.
And I'm going to be mindful, thank you.
I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor Cabral, the matter of St. Thomas, you've been, keep quoting St. Thomas. How many units could the servicing, how many units can they, can they build with the capacity that St. Thomas got? How many housing units?
And I will turn to Director Harvey or our staff. And I do appreciate that. And I thank, and I thank you for that. I just want to make sure that decorum in the chamber has been maintained. If I can get you that, that answer, I don't know if either one of you want to jump on that. Director Harvey?
He's referring to the St. Thomas agreement and what was, yeah. And so, just so council knows, there seems to be a little difference between generally in engineering and things, and Mr. Mullen can verify this, we don't talk about units so much. We talk about megaleters of flow. But to answer your question, in the deal, if I recall, I'd have to pull up in front of me, so don't quote me on the figures, but they asked for allocation for about five or six megaleters of capacity from St. Thomas, Central Algen did, in order to facilitate the development that they were hoping to develop on their lands. And so that's what was negotiated through that, through that deal. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Seventy-seven hundred units. Seven thousand, seven hundred units. That's more units than that huge plant that you're going to build out here.
Mr. Crook, I kindly thank you for your question. I just want to make sure that we move through the questions. I did see other people had hands available.
One more question for Phil. I'm, I'm Counselor Fisher.
I'm going.
Counselor Fisher, where do I get one of those stuff, the annexation sign, so I could put it on my front here? I think you have one on your front here. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Counselor Fisher.
Yeah, so, Mr. Crook, I'm not anti-development. I think you'd probably see that tonight. As a matter of fact, I, I think responsible growth in the municipality of Springwater is something I take very seriously. And frankly, people like yourself and your lands, I'm not opposed to development there. But what you have to realize is you're one landowner. I represent twenty thousand people, right? And, you know, my ward, but all of Springwater. And you have to realize, I have to weigh out, I have to weigh out what they would like as well, right? So your financial gain, and I respect it, I'm a capitalist, but you have to realize that I can't give up or I can't condone giving forty-three hundred acres and whatever else, along with it, foregone DCs and tax revenues. I can't do that, with all due respect, because you want to tie into the pipe. I empathize, right? I see what you want to do. And frankly, if I owned your land, there's a good chance I'd want it too. But I don't just represent you, although I do, but I represent twenty thousand other people too. I have to weigh out their wants and needs and future as well. So, yes, I, I, I am pro-development, you know, if it's responsible development. But I, I don't, I have a hard time seeing that as responsible. So I hope that answers your question.
And I'm sure that the two of you can continue this conversation. Unless there's anything else I will turn now for.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next question.
My name is Sandy McConkey, two eight six six Old Orchard Road. Good evening, your worship and council. I'm here to express concern regarding the notice of motion related to the MZO's approved in 2023 for the Remington Group and Paul Sadlin. According to Aurelia Matters, December nineteenth, 2023, at the time of approval, staff advised that appropriate full water and sewer servicing would be required, which could include a developer-led servicing initiative or the consideration of a cross-border agreement. The same article noted that Ainsley Group identified the preferred option is discharging to the city of Berry's infrastructure. With that in mind, and based on the information presented this evening by Ainsley, Watson and Associates, along with correspondence from the Remington Group, and Innovative Solution, and the presentation that we heard from the MLG, I respectively asked the following. Is the motion appropriate without a current staff report or clear documentation supporting that it's in the municipality's best interest? Two, given that the MZO's were approved without finalized servicing agreements and submitted to the province, does the municipality retain decision-making authority? Three, could this motion expose the municipality and taxpayers to legal or financial risk? I raise these questions in the spirit of transparency and accountability. And as a resident and taxpayer, I seek to better And as a resident and taxpayer, I seek to better understand through a staff recommendation. Thank you for my time, your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if you.
I can.
I want you to consider them.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. Next questions? And not seeing any at this time, we will take a bio break. Thank you for being here this evening. I'm sorry, counsel, we're just going to take care of a couple of housekeeping. And.
Very first thing we'll have to do.
Yeah.
All right. At this time, we will need a motion to extend. And if I could hear Counselors Fisher and Moore. And that counsel hereby extend the automatic adjournment for the meeting to 11:00 PM. As part of our procedural bylaw, it's hour by hour. So at this time, all those in favor? And that has carried. We will now move on to our minutes. May I have a mover and seconder for council minutes, please? Counselor Alexander and Counselor Garwood, that the minutes of council listed here and be improved as presented. And it's the minutes from our regular meeting of council of June 18, 2025. Are there any questions on these minutes? Not seeing any, all those in favor, and that has carried. Now moving on to our boards and committees, may I have a mover and seconder to receive the boards and committee and organization minutes? Counselors Fisher and Thompson, that the minutes of the boards and committees and other organizations listed herein be received as information. One, the council minutes of the Cultural and Heritage Advisory Committee meeting of April 10, 2025, and minutes of the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting of June 17, 2025. Are there any comments or questions? Not seeing any, all those in favor, and that has carried. And this is our board reports. May I have a mover and seconder to receive the library salary increase, please? Mover Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Moore, that the report from the CEO of Springwater Township Public Library dated July 2, 2025 be received, and that the amount of $37,212.63 be added to the Springwater Township Public Library budget of 2025 for staff salary increases. Are there any comments or questions on this? Counselor Alexander?
I'll keep it brief. I have no problem with the motion as it stands. I would just, I feel understanding that this is, you know, a learning curve as the union has just come in. I would just respectfully ask in future budgets that that was built in at budget time, like I believe our staff does with, with a bit more of a guesstimate. So, but it's a learning curve, and I think we all fully understand that.
Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. So through the chair to Director Bedard. So where might this $37,212.63 come from? What would your recommendation be?
Director Bedard?
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. Through you to Counselor Thompson. My recommendation would be to fund this through the Tax Rate Stabilization Reserve. Had the amount been built into the budget at budget time, it would have come from the tax rate. So it makes sense to take it from this reserve.
Counselor Thompson?
So if I could provide amendment to this motion and have that added, that this money be taken from the Tax Rate Stabilization Fund. Is that correct?
I'm seeing nods. So I'm moved. And is that a friendly, I'll turn to the clerk. Is that a friendly amendment or would you require this to be?
I would, I would suggest that it be a formal amendment. So I have it moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Alexander.
Counsel, all those in favor of the amendment? That has carried. Are there any further comments or questions on the main motion as amended? All those in favor? And that has carried. We are now moving on to item. Item nine, a standing item includes the correspondence and information items from council's information regarding the city of Berry proposed boundary adjustments. Items requested to be added to this section of the agenda can be sent to the clerk at springwater.ca and are due Thursday before the regular agenda meeting by noon. Any correspondence received after the deadline will be added to the Friday council information package and to the next regular council agenda. May I have a mover and seconder before we get to this? Counselor Moore and Counselor Thompson. And the motion reads that correspondence items listed 9.2 through 9.7 be received for information. 9.2 is correspondence from the Simcoe County Federation of Agriculture dated June 19, 2025. Rejection of the city boundary proposal. 9.3 correspondence from Innovative Solutions dated June 24, 2025 regarding comments from the Midhurst Landowners submission and ongoing Berry boundary discussions. 9.4 correspondence from sean.ca dated June 24, 2025. Comments on the Midhurst Landowner Group submission and ongoing Berry boundary discussions. 9.5 correspondence from the Remington Group dated June 25, 2025 regarding the 727 Bayfield Street North Springwater. Correspondence from, sorry, 9.6 correspondence from Catherine Bennett and Rick Cook dated June 25, 2025 are east 716 St. Vincent Street. And 9.7 correspondence from the city of Berry dated June 26, follow-up to shared principles for boundary adjustment and cross-border servicing. So at this time, counsel, I would ask if there's any items to be pulled, if there's comments to be made, we can make those as part of the regular. So basically, this would just be a redirection. So comments can be made on all of them, but if they need to pull something for redirection, we can do that. And not seeing anything to be pulled, we will go back for comment on items.
If I can pull something to be read. The Spoke and Federation of Agriculture, and I'd like to go on 9.7 separately, please.
So at this time, I have items 9.2 and 9.7 to be pulled. Not seeing any further. At this time, we will now be receiving 9.3, 9.4, 9.5 and 9.6 with 9.2 and 9.7 to be dealt with separately. Any comments on the remaining items? Not seeing any, all those in favor, and that has carried. We will now move back to 9.2, which is correspondence from the Federation of Agriculture. And I'm mover and seconder for this, please. Counselors Fisher and Alexander. And I will turn to Counselor Fisher.
Just wondering if the clerk would mind reading out the, the letter for us?
Clerk Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. The letter reads, Dear Mayor Coughlin and members of council, the Simcoe County Federation of Agriculture strongly supports the Springwater Agricultural Advisory Committee in their rejection. The letter reads, Dear Mayor Coglan and members of council, the Simcoe County Federation of Agriculture strongly supports the Springwater Agricultural Advisory Committee in their rejection of the City of Berry's annexation proposal. We understand the need for land to accommodate development, but it must be a balance. Growth cannot come at the expense of losing productive farmland that is essential for food, security, environmental sustainability, and the rural economy. This proposed annexation threatens to convert acres upon acres of highly productive farmland and natural areas into employment lands, covering commercial and industrial uses. This is prime agricultural land that should remain in food production, not be repurposed for warehouses, subdivisions, and sprawl. The permanent loss of this land would be a direct blow to Ontario's food security, environmental sustainability, and rural economy. Before any discussion of annexation is even considered, the City of Berry must first demonstrate that it has fully and efficiently utilized the lands already available within its existing settlement boundary. Expanding outward into neighboring municipalities while underutilizing land remains within the city is unjustifiable and inconsistent with good planning principles. We are aware that despite our opposition, the province of Ontario may choose to intervene in support of Berry's proposal. This potential override of local decision-making is deeply concerning. Local councils are best positioned to understand and protect their communities' long-term interests. Decisions about land use must reflect local priorities, not just provincial growth mandates. Ontario is already losing over 300 acres of farmland every day. If municipalities like yours are not empowered to stop this trend, the consequences will be irreversible. We urge this council to publicly reject the City of Berry's annexation proposal. Call on the province to respect local planning decisions and the agricultural value of the land in question. And to prioritize intensification, redevelopment, and the use of existing serviced lands within current municipal boundaries before supporting any expansion into productive farmland. Demand a transparent and accountable provincial review process should intervention be considered. The farming community is watching closely, and we are ready to support the efforts to ensure Simcoe County's farmland is protected for today and for future generations. Warm regards. Dave Ritchie, Simcoe County Federation of Agricultural President.
Counselor Fisher?
There. I just wanted to thank the Simcoe County Federation of Agriculture for their interest in this. I've had the opportunity to speak to many farmers and those who make their living in agriculture, and they're in staunch opposition to to annexation. I think one line in here, local councils are best positioned to understand and protect their communities. I think that rings very true. And the agricultural community from my ward all the way to Mr. Garwood's ward are watching. And I think we we all need to take note. I'd like to have this actually forwarded to the provincial facilitator. Minister Flack, MPP Downey, Premier Ford, the County of Simcoe, and the Township of Oremadonte.
I'm just on the fly here, understanding that this section is. Would it be beneficial for council then to just have as as part of this section that all correspondence that we receive be sent to the applicable? So that we don't have to go one by one and amend it every time. If this this section was, this is all correspondence from from landowners or invested parties. I think that if we're, this might save us procedurally every time that all correspondence. Be sent to the provincial land facilitator. It would need to go to the County of Simcoe, Oremadonte, all the parties that are involved. I am asking a question. Sorry, Deputy Cabral, did you?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Counselor. Fisher put something on the table to make an amendment, and we didn't finish dealing with it. And are you changing it, or are you making another amendment to his amendment? That's what I want to know.
I was hoping for a friendly amendment, but I'm in discussion, seeing if this might expedite us going one by one to ensure that the. The information gets to the people that we were intending it to get to.
I think we can decide individually on each one.
I am not going to argue that that's. Minister Flack, the Township of Oremadonte, the City of Berry, provincial land facilitator, County of Simcoe. Anybody else? Counsel Alexander?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan, and. I'm going to ask if Counselor Fisher has any appetite for this, because he may not. I think further to sending this to all those parties, which I think is very important, I would like this council to express its support for this, for this correspondence. The agricultural community is a huge part of Springwater. We constantly talk about it. We talk about how important they are. We need to respect their opinion, and I think it's important that we endorse this.
That's me.
Counselor Fisher?
Yeah, I I I fully concur with that. I think that the Simcoe County Federation of Agriculture, they actually attended the agricultural committee at last sitting. And they've definitely shown an interest, not only in their members, but in Simcoe County and Springwater as a whole, and our future. So I wholeheartedly agree.
And the clerk has drafted an amendment that the Simcoe County Federation of Agriculture letter be endorsed by council and forwarded to the premier, to Premier Ford, Minister Flack, Township of Oremadonte. City of Berry, provincial land facilitator, and the County of Simcoe. Counselor Garwood?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. And through you to Clerk Marshall, can you please just outline to council the difference in regards to accepting information and endorsing information? Just from a procedural perspective?
Clerk Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, through you to Counselor Garwood. So when council passes a motion to receive something for information. It's simply just that receive for information. For council to endorse something, it signifies that council fully supports the the position that the letter is outlining.
Counselor Gar?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan, and I thank the agricultural community for bringing that forward. And again, I think we've said it here before at this table many times. We have an agricultural advisory committee, we have the Simcoe County Federation of Agriculture, who provide great sound advice to this council on many aspects, not just the boundary adjustment. Or any discussions regarding the city of Berry. At the same time, and I've said it before, we should listen to this committee, we should listen and value as to what they have to say. And of course. They're going to staunchly push back against any sort of boundary adjustment, as many of us have, and many of us continue to do. But at the same time, we also have to understand that we can say, yes, we appreciate the committee, and we appreciate the information coming forward. But just doing that does not solve the problem, does not solve the issue. It is, that's not a made-in-Springwater solution by endorsing one thing. So I'm happy to endorse or accept or receive any information that comes forward, but at the end of the day. It does not change anything at this table, and I think folks need to know that.
I think that the, if I may, before I go here, I think that the clarification was that. Receiving something, not receiving something, endorsing, receiving, I think it was, I think the comment was a procedural comment, and I was just. I saw some hands go up that were in what I would assume to be disagreement, but I don't think there's anything to disagree to disagree with. I think that there has been an amendment put forward, and it has been seconded, not yet. So just a seconder for the Deputy Cabral. And it has been read. Again, this is for the Premier Ford, Minister Flack, Township of Oremadonte, City of Berry, County of Simcoe, and the provincial land facilitator. And it also that it was endorsed by council, yes. All those in favor?
Record vote, please.
Thank you. And for clarification, is this on the amendment, or are you wanting a recorded vote on the main motion?
Everything.
So so that would be then, this is after this one. You can call a recorded vote whenever you want, but I'm just, I don't want to have to do it twice. Thank you. So this is just on the amendment. So all in favor of the amendment? And that has carried. And now we'll go back to the main motion as amended, and a recorded vote has been called. Clerk Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I will read the main motion as amended before I call the vote. So the motion reads that correspondence from the Simcoe County Federation of Agriculture dated June 19, 2025 regarding rejection of City of Berry boundary proposal be received for information. And that the letter be endorsed by council and forwarded to Premier Ford, Minister Flack, Township of Oremadonte, City of Berry, the County of Simcoe, and the provincial land facilitator. Deputy Mayor Cabral has called a recorded vote. When I call your name, please state yes or no. Counselor Garwood?
No.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Cabral?
Yes.
Mayor Coglan?
Yes.
That has carried.
We're now moving on to item 9.7, mover and seconder for this, please. Counselor Fisher and Counselor Garwood, that correspondence from the City of Berry dated June 26. Regarding the follow-up of shared principles and boundary adjustments and cross-border servicing. And at this time, I can open it up for comments and questions. Deputy Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. The reason I asked for this one to be pulled separately is I'm in the same position I was when the first one came. I voted not to receive it. I'm going to vote not to receive this. So that's why I wanted it separate.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. So I'll be voting to receive this, and I have some comments about it. I think it's important that we highlight some of the changes that the city Berry has made for the proposal, and. Keeping in mind, I agree with Mr. Ritchie for the Federation of Agriculture. That regardless of what we decide, there is going to be a boundary adjustment. I think everybody in this council has, I mean, Deputy Mayor Cabral alluded it to tonight, there is going to be a boundary adjustment. Because it's the province's decision, we're a lower tier government. And right from the start, it's been made very clear to all of us by everybody that's given this advice, there is going to be a boundary adjustment. So having said that, I I from the start have been trying to avoid annexation, which is something that's going to happen to us. And I've been more in favor of a shared principle boundary adjustment, which we actually get to take part in. And will be compensated somewhat for the land that's going for the city of Berry. So some of the things that I like about what's in this deal. For the township of Springwater, because I believe in a made-in-Springwater solution, and I think this leads right into that. Number one, the financial compensation that we'll be receiving has changed from $7,500 to $1,250 for per developable acre. That's adding approximately $10 million to the payout we'll receive, bringing the total to around $25 million. Just to put that into perspective, that's the annual tax-supported budget that the township of Springwater has on an annual basis. So I see that as a huge win to our taxpayers and to our community. Even invested conservatively, that would give us over $1 million a year, a year that we could invest back into our community. So if you're looking to create some kind of fund that would go on forever, that would be one way of doing it. Also, given the fact that we will only lose about $150,000 in tax revenue when the boundary adjustment takes place. I think the the math definitely works in favor of our taxpayers here. Secondly, I like the idea of having a Little Lake Provincial Park. This conservation trust preserves and protects this land for future generations. People who will benefit most from this are the residents of Springwater. Midhurst residents will have a direct path and access to a world-class recreation and conservation area. Third, I believe in economic development. The City of Berry will invest $100,000 per year, four, five years, to assist us with hiring our own EDO. And work collaboratively collaboratively with us to create and implement our own economic development plan, which we have a horrible track record on. We haven't even been able to hire an economic development officer at this point. Our tax rate right now is 95% residential. And 5% industrial, we've heard tonight. That's not a good thing, and that's really on council. Because we've had an opportunity to get involved in economic development, certainly for the past three years and the previous council, but for some reason, we we've rejected that. Uh, fourth, there'll be a tax phase-in program for our farming community caught up in the boundary adjustment. This 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 phase-in plan will be a 20-year tax relief program. With no requirement for any farmer to sell farmland. That this 20-year phase-in plan is unheard of in the province, but it will be available to our farming community. And lastly, I think the cross-border servicing agreement will be the centerpiece of this agreement. These two projects that that will be able to be fast-tracked because of this agreement will bring millions of new tax revenues to both the township. As well as the county, what I call a win-win-win solution. And finally, that brings the total value of this compensation to our, to the township of Springwater, over $125 million. When this boundary adjustment takes place. I've had the opportunity to meet with the Central Elgin Mayor twice over the past month to get his perspective on how they have perceived the agreement. So this is the community, the township, that was on the other side of the St. Thomas deal. So like us, this boundary adjustment was kind of imposed upon them. They are thrilled with the agreement. Like us, they're a medium-sized agricultural-based municipality. With a long history of farming, they have found the agreement to be a financial windfall them, windfall for them. And have used the funds and services to set up their community for future success. As we go forward with this boundary adjustment, I'm looking forward to wrap this up sooner as opposed to later. I've got all the information that I need. I think this is a really good opportunity and a good deal for our residents, and I'm thrilled. That this new information is coming out. I'm thrilled that all of the information is being made public, so our residents can judge. On what facts are as opposed to what is being put out there that's non-factual. So when this comes up, I'll be voting in favor of receiving this.
And thank you. And before I do go to other members of council, before I forget, I definitely wanted to just take a minute and thank our staff. Who have been all consumed by this and the hours and hours and hours of work you have spent. I thank you for keeping it apprised, working with the City of Berry, with the county, to ensure that the accuracy that we provide, when we do provide information to the public, it is accurate. I know that this is on top of everything else that happens in a day, so I just wanted to thank you for your diligence on this and making sure that we're best able to communicate with with the with the public. Deputy Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I I guess part and partial to to my reluctance is the 4,500 acres. Uh, but the other piece, I guess, is when it comes to the farmland or anybody else who has land, nobody can make them sell it. They might be able to rezone it, but I don't think they can make them sell it unless it's an expropriation piece. So that's the reasons why. Yes, it's more money, but I'm not lost on the fact that we had someone here earlier on telling us that if we were to develop this property on his own, on our own. It was in the neighborhood of $1.5 billion. So. 20 million or 25 million still doesn't seem very much to me.
I'm just going to turn to Director Russell. The 4,500 acres that has been, that keeps being, I want to make sure that we have information in correspondence this evening. What is the number, the overall land at this at this point?
Through you, Mayor Coglan, and. You'll have to forgive me because I don't have that in front of me right now, but I believe the number, the acreage that's associated with this letter from the City of Berry is in the order of. 3,500 acres-ish, not the original 4,300 acres that was originally proposed by the city. But don't put me on the exact.
No, and I apologize, I just, I, the intent of this and understanding that we're going on a summer break, I just want to make sure that the information that is that is here this evening is clear. And I'm, you can tell me you don't have it in front of you, but I'm going to ask you again, how many properties within that area are we speaking about?
Through you, Mayor Coglan. If I remember correctly, I believe it's 81 total properties in that revised. Rep proposal.
And if I'm correct, the information that was received back was of the 81 of those properties. Currently, either 20 to 23 are in the tax farm tax class, but however. For example, Bradford Greenhouses was originally in there, but they were part of the farm tax. for example, Bradford Greenhouses was originally in there, but they were part of the farm tax class. So our staff continues to diligently work on this. Um, as an update, the, of those eighty one properties, forty six would have be dwellings, so residences. Um, at this point, what our staff are attempting to do with the provincial facilitator, with the county, with Oramadonte and with the city of Berry is determine the scope of what a developable acre is. At this time, what what Berry puts out, what the county puts out, what we put out, we need to make sure that we're all working within the same framework. Uh, so that has been requested and as as that moves forward, then the actual numbers would be more accurate. So this was an update. This is not a final agreement. This is just where things have evolved to and at that time, I can turn for more comments and questions. I have councillor Alexander and then councillor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coghlan. So it's very confusing when the city of Berry, the proposals keep changing and I understand they're trying to give us a better proposal or whatnot. Um, they're not here to present it, which I do find very disrespectful. Um, this is, they're trying to annex our land. We should be able to have a back and forth question with them when something's just thrown on our agenda of, we're going to give you a bit more money here. Um, we're gonna, I think, take some land away, uh, but we're not going to really talk about it unless you kind of zone in on the map. So I would respectfully ask them to be here in order for me to accept something like this. And to councillor Thompson's comments and interesting math, I'm not sure where we got the phase in over ten years. When I'm reading this, it says a part of the transition plan, a property tax phase in program is anticipated to ease the transition for affected property owners. So unless you're seeing different reports than I am or having conversations that I'm not a part of, I'm not sure where we're getting that information from.
Thank you. That would be information that I have had conversations with farmers. I have asked individual farmers. Again, there is direction that I've accepted from the agriculture committee. However, if this is to move forward, how is it that, you know, we heard that during the annexation in in Innisville, it was, it was cut that day. And we had farming communities who were priced out of being able to do their operations. I don't want that. And we have unanimously, well, we've supported it again tonight, that we don't want that for our farming community. Best case scenario, nothing happens. Springwater stays the same. That's great. If this is to move forward negotiations and and talking with people about um, the idea of having and I, I see the gentleman, I'm going to get this wrong, but there's um, as part of the wow, forgive me, just one second. I would, I would turn to the chair. There, there was different ideas that were, that were tossed out. But the idea of having, um, and this is difficult because this was brought up in a facilitated process as well. Is, is there opportunity, is there precedent in any negotiations that are proven, that the province has supported whereby there has been weight given to the agricultural committee, community? I am not able to find that. We are not able to find those examples. So we're working through conversations of what does that look like? How can that happen? And these are conversations that are happening. There's nothing in writing at this point. But I am of the mindset that the five year window that the province wants all of this done in does not support the next generation of farmers. So it's whether the province even has an appetite to extend any negotiations. They want everything finalized within five years. But I'm, I do have advice from, from the farming community, but I still feel that providing some sort of stabilization over a longer period of time could have less impact and still support generational farming. Councillor Alexander.
So thank you, and I appreciate you having those conversations. I think they're important conversations. My point was councillor Thompson stated it like it was a fact that was part of the proposal from Berry and that is clearly not the case.
Thank you for that correction. Councillor, I'm going to go to councillor Fisher and then councillor.
I'd like to answer the question.
Councillor Thompson and then councillor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Coghlan. So just to answer your question, councillor Alexander, I picked up the phone today. I called the city of Berry. Because it's in there, I just wanted, wanted some clarification as to what that tax phase in program was. And they specifically said for farmers that it's going to be, their proposal is going to be a twenty year tax phase in for farmers. So the reason I got it is because I picked up the phone and asked what it meant. And and I think that's part of my job is to, if I, if I don't see, if I don't understand some information. Now, when I ask them, you know, is this confidential? No, this is, this is what we're working on. This is what the proposal is going to be. So I think that's important for our farming community to know that um, we're listening to them. We're on side with them and we're still working out the agreement that's going to benefit everybody the most.
Councillor Fisher.
That's a lot to unpack there. Councillor Thompson, I, I don't think we each individually negotiate our, our uh, our own package with the city of Berry. I can see where councillor Alexander had that question. Uh, just because they told you that, they didn't put it in writing and they didn't propose it to us. So thank you for picking up the phone, but I guess we can all just pick up the phone and negotiate something with them. Another point you made, you said that you agreed with Mr. Ritchie in that eventually we, there would be a land boundary adjustment. In his letter, he didn't say anything to that effect. Closest he said is Ontario may choose to intervene. So, you know, I worry that we're, we're making statements that aren't necessarily true and putting words in people's mouths, right? So I'd caution you against that. My next point is this, uh, about the.
Again, decorum, councillor Fisher, I'm trying very hard to keep this very respectful and and to suggest.
What did I say?
And and again.
What did I say? Please, you, you, you can't call it out and then not tell.
And if you would give me two seconds to say what it is.
You've got the floor.
And as chair, you are correct. I determine who has the floor. You made an insinuated, you insinuated that councillor Thompson was deliberately misleading the public. That was your, and that was what you said. In, in, in accordance with our procedural bylaw, you will know that you are not permitted to do so.
It's not what I said. Anyway, I'll continue, Mayor Coghlan. As for the deal itself that Mr. Thompson brought up, he says it's a good deal. I think it's obviously a terrible deal. Anyone who actually goes along with it's probably a terrible deal maker. Twenty five million dollars for thirty six hundred acres now seems like a terrible deal to me. I think anybody in their right mind would know that it is. My last point, and this is to you, Mayor Coghlan, you said that you'd received direction from the ag committee? Uh, you said that previously.
And and my apologies, I, I was at the meeting and direction was provided where the statement was that they do not support that. So it wasn't, there was no direction to me from the agricultural committee to, I, I was just trying to clarify that this was not by direction. This was me on myself.
Okay, so previously.
Councillor Fisher, again, putting your hand up does not make, I, I also have a microphone.
Didn't use it.
I provided the clarification.
I hadn't finished before she started talking, as per usual. Can I finish?
Councillor Fisher.
Yeah, thank you. You had said previously that you had received direction from the ag committee, right? And that you were negotiating uh, for their taxation. That is not what happened in the ag committee. We did not give you direction. We actually made a very firm statement that we were opposed to annexation. That's my clarification.
That is correct. And upon receipt of the OFA, I did reach out and had a conversation with the chair or with, with both the chair of the committee and both and Mr. Ritchie that I wanted to express that in, I understand that these committees need to have firm. I wanted to assure them that I was not acting against because there is no direction that I would continue to try and negotiate should the boundary adjustment happen. I have talked to both the chair and the president. So it's not like I'm doing this behind their backs. I'm being open communication with them both. Councillor Garwood.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coghlan. What, what just occurred and what continues to occur unfortunately, it seems is this, this is the way in which council's going to continue to act every single meeting. This gets us nowhere. This gets us absolutely nowhere. There can be differing, a difference of opinion around this table. There has been for almost three years now. But we look like fools when we act in this manner. There is decorum, there is responsibility in the positions in which we hold. We can disagree. Let's disagree all day long, but there's a way to do it. There's an absolute way to do it. And what I have witnessed the last two meetings and once again just now is the opposite of that, councillor Fisher. Second, speaking to the matter at hand, which is why we are here tonight to review the information, the updated correspondence from the city of Berry regarding shared principles for the boundary adjustment. That is the topic on the agenda right now. The information that is in front of us, once again, we continue to go around in a circle. The facts are, I pulled open the letter that we received from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing on June the second, twenty twenty five, exactly four weeks ago today. And in that letter, whether we like it or not, what has been said is, it says, and I will quote, Minister Flack has been and will continue to be apprised of these ongoing discussions. His expectation is that a framework agreement will be achieved to address the needs for additional community and employment area land supply as identified in the needs assessment report by September the thirtieth. That is the fact in which we are working with right now. That's a fact. Whether we like it or not, we cannot accept things, we cannot endorse things, we can endorse things. At the end of the day, that is the fact. Going back to the letter from the Simcoe County Federation of Agriculture, which is related to the topic I'm going to discuss. It says in there, we understand the need for land to accommodate development, but it must be a balance. Of course, I think we all agree with that perspective. It also says further on down the letter, we are aware that despite our position, the province of Ontario may choose to intervene in support of Berry's proposal. This potential override of local decision making is deeply concerning. Local councils are best positioned to understand and protect their community's long term interests. Decisions about land use must reflect local priorities, not just provincial growth mandates. I agree. I think we all agree with that perspective. But again, for us to just say, we're going to head in the sand, I've said that I think five meetings in a row and just reject something to say we want, we don't like it, does not support anything. I will admit, I have participated in that, not accepting a report, thinking it's going to change our end result. I can tell you, the last two months have been the opposite of that. It has not changed anything. It's only gotten worse. The actions at this table have only gotten worse. And the actions as to this table are reflected into the community. That's not how anyone should act. We don't want to be treated that way. The same way in which we treat our staff, we should be treating one another. There is no reason why we can't. I will stop my rant right now, Mayor Coghlan, but at the end of the day, to just get that gotcha moment, that is how this council has acted over the past two plus years, but the last two specific months. And it's deeply concerning. And that's not just my opinion. That is the opinion of many folks. We all talk about how we hear from people every single week. Well, that's what I'm hearing. It's very concerning. And I'm trying to keep my decorum here because it is not productive. We do not win. Springwater does not win. And I know I got seeing sighs around the table right now from my perspective, but I have this microphone as you do. My perspective is that we will continue to lose, Springwater residents will continue to lose if we do not move forward in a manner that is best for this municipality. And there is no good option. I will agree with that perspective, none. And everything feels like a lose most days on this matter, but that's why we're here. We have to make those tough decisions.
Councillor Alexander.
I, I just wanted one brief comment on um, the letter from the provincial facilitator or from Minister Flack. Sorry, I can't remember which one. I think we are moving. We are part of this agreement. We are at the table with the facilitator. I believe there's weekly, every second week, like there's lots of meetings. We are there. We are not burying our head in the sand. We are not saying we don't want to talk to anyone. We want to, we are participating because we know we may have to give up some land. I think it is our job to fight for as much of it as we can. We are at the table. It doesn't mean we have to accept garbage proposals in my mind from the city of Berry. We're at the table. We're providing our own solutions. That's what we're doing. And so I think we are there. We're doing our due diligence and we're doing what we need to do. But we don't just have to blindly accept what Berry gives us. And just to be clear, had we blindly accepted the last one, which I believe certain members of, on this table wanted to do, we'd only be getting seventy five hundred. We've moved up to twelve thousand five hundred. It's how negotiation works. And we have to do what's best for all of us. And that can be, we don't have to accept just what Berry gives us.
And thank you. And for clarification, yes, the September thirtieth deadline does still hold. The province is absolutely expecting that to happen. I had a conversation with Mr. Matheson um, today and sought advice from MP Saunderson, who is the PA to Minister Flack to ensure that our staff and our council is on the right track, that we're providing updates. And again, there was no intention to accept on a proposal. I don't think anyone would ever just accept what was given to them at first. There has been a lot of work that has gone into this and there will continue to be a lot of work. I think that as development happens, developments, as things come up over the summer break, I'm sure this council will find ourselves in a special meeting to deal with this as we, as we get there. This is not the final said final in, in, but we're, we're getting closer. And I, I think that I committed to providing updates. And this is simply me fulfilling the commitment to this council and the public that I would continue to keep it public and updated as the process goes along. So this is not a final offer. This is how things have evolved between then and now. Councillor Fisher.
Just a comment. So, you know, some of you can't chastise me for being fervent uh, about my position, but I, I will caution you. Uh, the public is watching and the public does not want this. So am I, am I choosing a side on it? Absolutely. But I would certainly encourage you, uh, I would certainly encourage some members of council not to be wishy washy on the issue because you're either with annexation or you're not, right? So um, am I forceful about it? Absolutely. But I know which side I, I stand on and uh, at least I can sleep with at night.
Councillor Garwood.
Thank you, Mayor Coghlan. Um, and yes, once again, we, we have not ever accepted any proposal from the city of Berry. We have not accepted, meaning agreed to any proposal. We're not agreeing to the proposal. The updated principles that have been shared here today, that's not what we're doing. It's procedure. I said this last time. It is merely procedure. And additionally, looking also understanding that, yes, we might get to that point where a decision has to be made. But this council's also never provided any response back to the city of Berry. We have not accepted procedurally a proposal that has been given to us. We have never gone back and said, well, then this is what we demand. I don't recall us doing that. Maybe I missed that memo, but I don't see that. So if that's the direction that we want to go or we think is the right path to go, understanding that we all have different perspectives. I might say that the province is going to come in and I'm going to get told that I'm wrong and they're not going to come in because they don't have the appetite. Again, none of us know that. That is our, each individual's perspective. But I also have folks in the community that'll say, we don't want this. We don't support an annexation. We don't support a boundary adjustment. But God forbid, we have to go down this path and there's no other option than whatever you do, make sure it is best for the future of this municipality. And that's our jobs, not being idealists. It's being realists. And this is what we have in front of us. Head in sand gets us nowhere, folks.
Councillor Moore and then Deputy Egan.
Thank you, Mayor Coghlan. Um, I just want to point out in the letter from the city of Berry for the correspondence. Under the proposed principles, the city Berry will extend municipal water and wastewater services to a portion of the township of Springwater in exchange for additional lands. Not specific, not anything. I don't even know what they're talking about. What, what extension? When I'll remind you too, that on December eleventh, they passed a notice of motion that stated, and whereas it is understood by all parties that there will be no servicing provided to the subject neighboring municipalities without a boundary adjustment. I simply can't keep up. Every time I turn around, there is a change or there is a goalpost that has moved. It's not employment, it's residential. It's not residential. And now we've got healthcare. Now we've got cross border servicing. We didn't have that up until a very short time ago. And you know, one of the, one of the reasons I put forward the motion in February was because of this very, of this very motion that said, we will not entertain servicing. It just seems to me that until the city of Berry can, can at least It just seems to me that until the city of Barry can, can at least offer something that makes sense, truly. And I want to point out too, that the Little Lake portion also just arrived in December. So to say that our heads are in the sand is not fair. It's just not fair. We try every time we get a proposal like this to sort of work through it and, and find what, you know, maybe what doesn't work. But honestly, how can we be asked to consider anything that changes so frequently?
Not seeing anything further on this. I'm assuming that there will be a recorded vote requested? No? All right. Council, I haven't moved and seconded. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? And that has been defeated. I don't know how to, can you? So I'm just going to defer to the clerk. Can we procedurally defeat that?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to more than 10 action items. May I have a mover and seconder for the action reports, please? Councillor Garwood and Deputy Cabral, that action reports 10.2 through 10.11 be received and the recommendations contained therein be approved as presented. 10.2 is our municipal ice storm assistance program of March 25th, March 2025. 10.3 is the community safety and wellbeing update. 10.4 is the award of 2025-32PW, the professional engineering consulting services. 10.5 is the award of the Hasty Trax Internal Works. 10.6 is the release of securities for 1256 Wilson Drive. 10.7 is the allocation of capital project funds for Currie Street Water Main Replacement. 10.8 is the 16 Mill Street West Hillsdale Reduction of Securities. 10.9 is the award of project 2025-31PW, Snow Valley Water and Wastewater Facility Assessment. 1010 is Midhurst Heights Phase One Claire Rose and 1011 is Parkland Dedication, and that is direction and update. At this time, council, I'll ask if there are any to be pulled to be dealt with separately for redirection. And not seeing any to be pulled, any comments or questions on the items listed? Not seeing any, all those in favor, and that has carried. We will now move on to our information reports. May I have a mover and seconder for the information reports, please? Councillors Fisher and Moore, that the reports, items listed here and be received for information, our Q1 2025 procurement summary. Number two is the automated speed enforcement update. And number three is the commemorative crosswalk in Elville. At this time, council, are there any to be pulled for redirection? Councillor Garwood?
Number three, please.
Anything on item one or two? Any comments or questions on item one or two? Not seeing any, all those in favor, that has carried. And a mover and seconder for the crosswalk, please. I have councillor Garwood and councillor Alexander, and I will turn to councillor Garwood.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Last November, many members of council would remember, um, this was a notice of motion that, um, I brought forward in regards to a commemorative, um, sorry, commemorative is probably not the right word, but a, a veterans crosswalk at Queen Street and Mariah Street in Elville leading to the Senataf, um, in preparation for Remembrance Day in 2025. The information came back and I thank staff for the, the comprehensive report here. In the report, it does outline the costs associated, the financial implications, which ranged from $8,000 to through $25,000, depending upon the selected type of materials. There is a opportunity available through Veterans Affairs Canada to apply. Staff would put an application forward to therefore hopefully clawback some of the funds required for the project. I would like to see this project proceed in preparation and in time for Remembrance Day in 2025. So I would like to pose an amendment to include the scope within our annual line painting program and apply to the commemorative partnership program through Veterans Affairs Canada with the remaining amount drawn from the tax rate stabilization reserve fund for 2025.
Thank you, councillor Garwood. Open it up for comments or questions. Not seeing any. All those in favor of the, this is the amendment. Sorry, I need a seconder for the amendment. I'm just getting a little slow here. The seconders, councillor Thompson. So this is on the amendment, council, all those in favor. That has carried. And we will now move back to the main motion as amended. And I'm, maybe we don't want that reread. All those in favor. And that has carried. At this time, we'll move on to our verbal updates. And not seeing any municipal updates. Councillor Alexander and councillor Garwood? My apologies?
No, maybe I'd say no.
Okay. Deputy Cabral?
Actually, for brevity's sake, maybe I could pass, but there's a couple of things. Enhanced cardiac arrest response strategies. These were approaches that the county wanted to do for future consideration and development. And they included expanding training programs and increasing the availability of public access to fibrillators, implementing community-based system for dispatching and alerting community responders, which I found was pretty interesting. And introducing drone-based delivery of defibrillators. And the, the idea was to enhance survival rates among individuals experiencing cardiac arrest. Timely intervention is critical. Research indicates that probability of survival decreases by seven to 10% for each minute that passes without CPR or defibrillation. Through public education, CPR and first aid training and strategic placement of AEDs, the program has empowered citizens and visitors to be active participants in the chain of survival. The county manages 853 AEDs and facilitates the registration of another 462 independently operated units. The AEDs have been instrumental in the saving of 74 documented life-saving events since 2005. And training remains key. And in 2024, a total of 66 courses were conducted, training 1,187 individuals, a return to pre-pandemic engagement levels. To date, 17,667 residents have received CPR training and first aid. The community responder piece was interesting because it's designed to enhance the emergency response piece by capabilities of incorporating trained volunteer community responders into traditional 911 systems via notification on their phone. And if they get that notification on their phone and they're nearby, they can attend at a cardiac arrest event and provide service and facilitate critical intervention before the paramedics actually arrive. So that was pretty interesting stuff. They also looked at drone delivery of defibrillators and other things like medication even, you know, how do you say that in the lock zone? I have trouble with that one. For fentanyl overdoses. Anyway, they did a mathematical equation. They found that it was very, very useful. So they're going to engage drone technology too, not just for that, but also for looking for people and assisting at major events. The only thing that's in the way right now is the fact that they, they have some Transport Canada things to work out because it's only been recent that they can use a drone for beyond what they can see. So beyond visual capabilities. So that's exciting. And I think they set aside some money to try and do it, but it's not happening just yet. The county of Simcoe also, uh, the housing and homelessness services identified a 40-bedroom modular facility that would permanently increase capacity and support the county's initiative of increasing opportunities to bring individuals indoors, those who are currently unsheltered and experiencing homelessness in the city of Barry. The facility will allow the county of Simcoe to have flexibility in utilizing the space that would best support encampment response initiatives, along with opportunity for housing programs. The other piece here, and when it comes time for notice of motions, I'll probably throw one on the table, has to do with Crime Stoppers. The county of Simcoe provided one-time funding of $20,000 to Crime Stoppers of Simcoe Duffin, Muskoka. Crime Stoppers is a volunteer-driven program that has been helpful in assisting the police in solving crimes through anonymous tips from the public. The funding will help Crime Stoppers of Simcoe Duffin, Muskoka continue its current operations and build towards a sustainable financial future. This integrates well with the goals of the county's community safety and wellbeing plans and supports reduction of crime in the region, including county-owned facilities such as community housing. According to Crime Stoppers of Simcoe Duffin, Muskoka, there have been over $95 million worth of drugs seized, over $13 million worth of property recovered because of the tips since their inception. In 2024 alone, there were nearly 1,800 tips, over 80 arrests, over 215 charges laid, over $5 million in drugs seized and nearly 100,000 in property recovered. Despite their success, there's been some financial challenges. That's what they're working on. It's placed their operations in a bit of a precarious financial position. The district of Muskoka has committed 10,000 for 2025, but additional funding was needed to ensure their continued operation. In February 2025, county of Duffin also committed 10,000 for 2025 with direction to engage partners to find long-term equitable funding solutions. The other thing that came up was the garbage pickup. But that was deferred and hopefully we're going to be able to reach out to our residents and seek some of their input. There was a few options on the table, but the one that was the most contentious is that if you don't put your organics out with your garbage, they're not picking up your garbage. So hopefully we'll be able to put something out on social media and get some input from, from our residents so that when we go back to county in the fall, it's going to come back up again and we'll have some input from our folks, what they want us to do. Because a lot of people compost at home, but some of the things can't be composted at home. So that's the issue. That's it.
And I see CAO Ainsworth making a note of that. So at this time, we will move on to our municipal updates and I have councillor Alexander and then councillor Garwood. And probably in between you, we will have to extend again.
I'll be quick. No, no, I wouldn't, trust me. Everyone wants us to be quick here. I just wanted to do a shout out to the Felbston Recreation Association. We did our annual Canada Day fireworks. It is continuously an amazing show of fireworks. The fireworks are all donated by the residents. We have a great turnout. And so I just wanted to do a huge shout out to all the volunteers that make this great event happen.
Councillor Garwood?
And I concur. It was a great night last night and the Felbston CRA always does a great job. It's become our little tradition. So thank you. Just a couple of things to mention. First being on the theme of Canada Day, yeah, yesterday, I guess that was, we had Canada Day in the village, celebrating 25 years of Heritage Park. We were overwhelmed with the number of people that showed up and participated, nearing 400 people. That's our rough guesstimated number, ended up participating. I want to thank Springwater Fire and Emergency Services for being there. I want to thank obviously our recreation and facilities team. I couldn't get over the amount of people that commented on how beautiful the park was and how staff took such good care and effort. I even saw staff there yesterday before the event cleaning up and doing work. So that's a testament to Director Culver and Manager Dean and their team. And of course, all the folks that came out to celebrate Canada Day. We haven't done it in a couple of years, so this is a bit, bit new and we'll keep on doing it. I also want to thank council, especially the mayor and the deputy mayor, for supporting the event with your discretionary funds. Additionally, I wanted to also note that the Homer Barrett Park Master Plan Survey is open for its second round until July the 9th. So far, we're nearing 200 responses on the survey, which is fantastic to see. The first concepts of the master plan have been provided on our website to the public and I recommend folks go on there, fill out the survey, provide your feedback and it's so important. It's great to see there's a lot of, a lot of engagement there. And of course, I'll, I'll mention as it's a couple of months until we meet again, the Elville Farmers Market runs throughout the summer on Thursdays from 3:00 to 7:00 PM at the Elville Community Hall Parking Lot, 33 Queen Street West. We are, we are growing, nearing 20 plus vendors now, which is really exciting to see. Lots of local producers. So it's, it's a great, it's a great group this year. So please come out and support. Thank you.
I thought it was quite unique that the band who played at the opening portion of, was the same band who originally opened the park 25 years ago. So that was, that was kind of neat. And then they rolled right into Graham Scott Fleming. So we caught all, all different types, but councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Bring your attention to three movie nights that are coming up in our community. Anton Mills Community Recreation Association is hosting one July the 9th and August the 6th. August the 6th will be hot summer nights. Fire department will be there to keep all the kids cool with their, with their hoses. Also at Menacing, there's one August 26th. Menacing CRA will be having their annual ball tournament on Labor Day weekend, August 29th to the 31st. And if you've driven through Anton Mills lately, you'll notice our banners are up for the Anton Mills 150 years celebration of the schoolhouse being built. That will be September the 13th. Please come and it's going to be a very festive, enjoyable Saturday and we'd like to see you all there. With regards to library news, our summer reading program for our youth is, is going strong. We have over 150 or 350 registered already participating. Registration is still open, so please get your youth. It's a great opportunity for them to stay connected to reading and books over the summer. And this past week, our library has launched its new website. So if you're curious, please go on and see the great work that they're doing. Thank you.
Not seeing any other municipal updates. At this time, we will move on to our notices of motion. Nope. Oh, we have to extend. So that council hereby waive section 8.53 of the procedural bylaw to continue the remainder of the meeting. A mover and seconder to waive the procedural bylaw. Councillors Fisher and Moore? Counsel, all those in favor? That has carried. And now I'll move on to notices of motion and we do have a notice of which motion has been given. I've moved by councillor Fisher and I have a seconder for that, please. Councillor Alexander? And turn to councillor Fisher?
Great. Whereas in December of 2023, council unanimously supported the request for ministry zoning orders by Remington Group Incorporated and Paul Sadlin Communities for their proposed developments on Bayfield Street at the south end of Springwater. And whereas at the time, servicing for the Remington and Sadlin parcels was to be determined. And whereas on June 4th of 2025, council received an update on growth management work by WSP, including the 2021 Bayfield Street Corridor Study detailing the redevelopment potential for Bayfield Street and Main Street uses, which expands on the 2008 policies of Midhurst Secondary Plan. And whereas the Midhurst Landowners Group provided correspondence on June 13th of 2025, detailing the capacity of the Midhurst Wastewater Treatment Plant currently, and with the upcoming phase two expansion. And whereas servicing the Remington and Sadlin developments via the Midhurst Wastewater Treatment Plant will extend services to the Bayfield Corridor. And whereas the redevelopment of the Bayfield Street Corridor will deliver significant economic and social benefits for the township of Springwater. Now therefore, council hereby revokes its support for MZO 2023-001, the Remington Group Incorporated, 727 Bayfield Street North and MZO 2023-002, Paul Sadlin Communities, 2252841, Ontario Incorporated, 742 Bayfield Street, not unless they are serviced through the Midhurst Waste, excuse me, Midhurst Water and Wastewater Treatment Facilities. And further, the township staff will be directed to circulate the decision to Honorable Rob Flack, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Remington Group Incorporated, Paul Sadlin Communities, Midhurst Landowners Group and the Provincial Facilitator expeditiously.
Comment, councillor Fisher?
Yeah, actually, really, I feel like it's been all night, we've been commenting on this. I'm firmly opposed to allowing them to have a foot in both camps, receiving services from the city of Barry while we hand over 4,300 acres, 36, whatever it ends up being. Our taxpayers should not be writing a check for their services, particularly when we have partners that can facilitate that here within Springwater. So I'm staunchly opposed to it and I think we should revoke it for the time being.
Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. So there's been a lot of chatter about revoking the MZO. And in this clause, it says, And in this clause, it says revokes its support unless they are serviced through the Midhurst Water and Wastewater Treatment Facilities. This does not preclude them from, you know, figuring it out on their own with the city of Barry. Um, but I want to go back because I want to speak about a little bit of history. In March twenty twenty was the first time I saw the Remington proposal through Primate Care. They came to council and talked about their campus of care. It was five years ago. In September of twenty twenty-one, we had the Remington delegation, and both their planner and their architect, uh Barry Morrison and Michael Spaziani, both said, we need servicing from the city of Barry. That was four years ago. March twenty-three, we said explore the city of Barry options and the cross-border servicing. And I want to highlight too that our previous C A O had mentioned to me that there was this framework or M O U, very loose, but agreement that was actually penned in twenty fifteen with the city of Barry. I don't have a copy of that, and it could just, just be hearsay, but it was floating out there also around that time. Uh, December twenty twenty-three, the M Z O we endorsed for Remington. December twenty twenty-three, we also endorsed the M Z O for Sadlin. And we have done our level best to do what we can to help these developers get their projects off the ground. To no avail. In fact, what happened was they ended up being used as leverage. So that's not fair to anybody, and it's truly not fair to the developers, Remington Group and Sadlin. They've been held up and held hostage truly through this entire ordeal. Furthermore, we ended up again with this motion, this city of Barry motion on December eleventh stating clearly no cross-border servicing would be entertained uh without a boundary adjustment. So we've got two issues. We've got two parcels of land with uh M Z Os attached, and then we've got a boundary adjustment. The two are not the same. They're just not the same. So we're not revoking, and this doesn't say to revoke an M Z O. All it just says is that they need to proceed, and if they want to proceed with uh with the M Z O as directed, then they have to be serviced through the Midhurst Water and Wastewater Treatment Facility. It doesn't say that um we're not supportive because we continue to be supportive. We were unanimously supportive, and I would assume we all still are. Um, but it does say that the servicing now, uh, and they've been on, I'm, I'm assuming that they've considered their pursuit with the city of Barry over these last five years minimum, could be up to ten years. Um, previous councils I know had also approached the city of Barry for cross-border servicing to no avail. I haven't seen a single technical report from the city of Barry, not one. They're saying they can do all sorts of things. I have not seen anything to say that's in fact the truth. And I, I really think that if these developers were serious, they would have approached the city of Barry, and they have all that information. I'm not privy to. So um, I think to separate the two issues is a good idea, and uh so I, I plan to support this.
Uh councillor Fisher, deputy Cabral?
And then thank you for bringing up those points. Uh, we were all, and uh as councillor Moore said, uh, I assume we all still are in support of these uh these developments going forward. I think you all realize tonight, I want to see the bear, uh, the Bayfield Corridor uh thrive. But when I hear that the city of Barry won't entertain cross-border servicing without an exchange of land, I definitely feel goaded into something. Um, we want to be able to, we want to be able to service these ourselves, and we also want them to contribute to a maiden spring water solution where they contribute, and there's a trickle-down effect of go- growth throughout the Bayfield Corridor, not just growth at the top, and then it ends and goes stagnant.
Deputy Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Um, I, I, I I guess um for, for me, when I look at, at, at what we've been presented with versus what Oral Medante was presented with, um, I mean, the boundary piece, uh, that is different, I think, uh, than, 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 than the developing piece on Bayfield Street, the whole Bayfield Corridor piece. Because uh the oral one, it's not predicated on cross-border servicing in order to do anything. And, you know, even through the facilitation process, um, I, I would suspect that there may still be lands identified. Um, and you know, that might be the piece that we're going to have to look at when, when everything gets settled at the end of the day with the county and Oral Medante. Uh, but um, I, I, I do feel that uh it's basically, you know, kind of not really being negotiating. It's, it's a, you do this, and we get done. It's not, you know, we want to work with you to make anything happen, and the facilitation process that we're in right now, I suspect it's going to continue. Um, but uh, I'm probably going to support this myself too. And, and I think too, when I was looking at this, uh, another thing that came to mind was that when we were talking about the taxation piece, you know, um, simple taxes, uh, an average home in, in Springwater is forty-nine, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, forty-six hundred bucks roughly, including county and school board, and if that house was in the city of Barry, it'd be seven thousand and sixteen. So as I said earlier, it's kind of like having your cake and eating it too. You have your cake by getting the cross-border servicing, but you also benefit from the reduction in D Cs and the reduction in taxes. Um, so it's, 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 it doesn't seem quite fair to me. And I also uh, uh, will admit, I struggle with the piece where, you know, this council supported the M Z O with the best of intentions, and it's literally come back to um put us in a position where, you know, we're sitting here now, and, you know, a lot of us have different opinions on where this should go, but I really think that the Bayfield Corridor to be successful needs to be serviced by Springwater Township with the wastewater plant on um Snow Valley Road uh in order to make it viable, in order to make it vibrant, in order to, you know, bring the shops, bring the people, bring the additional housing there. And in addition to that, um, with the other two developments at the far south end, if they work with Springwater Township and, and the M L G to, to get to a quota, um, it's going to benefit the Bayfield Street Corridor in Bayfield, the Georgian Mall, the shops, the restaurants, all the way down to the four hundred. A lot of our Midhurst uh residents, you know, frequent that area now. So I, I, I think it's an opportunity for Springwater to develop on its own without being forced to negotiate a specific amount of land. I think that the boundary adjustment, if it's going to happen, it can still happen through the facilitation process, and we'll just have to see where that process takes us.
Councillor Garwood?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Um, through you, and again, I'm not sure if this should go to uh the clerk or the C A O. Are there any legal ramifications from removing an M Z O endorsement, understanding that we've only ever received an M Z O for discussion and deliberation and either approval or denial? Um, I don't believe we've ever stripped back an endorsement before, at least since I've been on council. Um, I understand that was also a question from the audience tonight, uh, from one of the individuals that was here um with concern from a, a legal perspective. Um, is that an information, is that a question that can be answered tonight, or uh would we require um legal advice for that?
C A O Ainsworth?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Uh, and I will confirm council has uh not revoked any support previously. Uh, as far as any legal implications, staff would not be able to answer that question. That would be a question that would need to be answered by legal. Um, and a- again, just uh wording around it, council does not approve M Z Os. They, uh, they approve support, endorse M Z Os. Um, the approval process is through the uh, the ministry itself.
Councillor Alexander?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. So this is more of a procedural question, which I'm not sure would go to councillor Fisher, if he's thought this through, or if it goes to staff. Um, just kind of uh, council hereby revokes its support, and then we go on to unless they are serviced through the Midhurst Water and Wastewater Treatment Facilities. So are we revoking our support tonight carte blanche? Or are we giving them an opportunity to respond, and if they respond that they want to, uh, you know, go through the Midhurst Landowners Group, then are, we are not revoking our support? I'm just trying to understand exactly what will happen on, when we vote on this.
Councillor Fisher?
Yeah, I, I thank you for the question. I uh, the way I envision it, we would be revoking it uh tonight. However, uh, if they wanted to come back and uh, and sign on with the, with the uh services through the Midhurst Landowners Group, then we could reinstate it.
And, sorry, councillor, sorry. C A O Ainsworth?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan, and from a um, a staff perspective, the direction is simply to provide this information to the parties that are outlined uh within the resolution. Uh, there is no other action from a township perspective except to uh relay the information to the province and to the other parties.
And I, I think too, on the correspondence that we received um on tonight in that heading from Remington, from Sadlin, out, did outline exactly what their intention was and that it was cost prohibitive and that I'm, before I do go to councillor Thompson, at the time when, when we provided um a unanimous support, servicing was to be determined. And there have been many, many questions here this evening um regarding the capability of the city of Barry, and you are correct, we don't have that information yet. We also were cautioned, and I, I don't want to put words in Mr. Mullins' mouth, but he was extremely, extremely caution this avenue. So I think that there needs to be some more internal work done. We need to continue, but to suggest that we are not going to not going to support a, a ca- a long-term care continuum where the, the property owner has said that their preferred method was with the city of Barry, with cross-border servicing, and that has been consistent for, for quite some time. And I do know that much like our geranium, Remington is a they know what they're doing. So I, I get that we can't make these decisions based on hypotheticals, and we've kept saying we need more information, we need more information. We don't have this yet. To suggest that we are going to pigeonhole ourselves with our support based on information we don't have yet? I, I will not be supporting this notice of motion. I fully stand behind the Remington Group and the project that they are bringing to our community. I think that this signals to the province that, again, we can't get our we can't figure things out, and I don't want to signal to the province to say, please just come in and do it for us. And that is a concern of mine, because we have said to them that we fully endorse these projects, and we will determine what the best avenue of servicing is, and we're getting there. So to pigeonhole ourselves during a process sends a message that I'm, I'm, will not support. I think that having these having Remington continue to work with our staff and our, at pre-con, I believe, getting ready to go, like, this is, this is exciting. This is a continuum campus that will provide seniors from, all the way from retirement to hospice. And across the road is a development that needs to be worked with our staff, but is going to provide different types of housing that our, our kids might actually be able to afford a house to, to start out in. So I am not going to even tamper with these because these are two very exciting development proposals, and I think that we still have to do the work to determine what the best servicing solution is for Springwater Township. And I, councillor Thompson? Yeah, councillor Thompson?
So I won't be voting in for, in favor of this for obvious reasons. Um, one question I do have um is does strong mayors apply when we have a recorded vote here?
Clerk Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Um, when you vote on this motion this evening, I don't see how strong mayors would apply to this.
And thank you. And again, it is not my intention to use strong mayors, and if you could speak to the process of the notice afterwards, please.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I believe you may be speaking about, um, there is a process for strong mayor powers where the mayor can give notice to veto a bylaw. Um, and there is, uh, so once council passes a bylaw, the mayor has uh two days to provide notice of an intention to veto. Um, and then there's further timelines after that, if that were a route taken.
And I'm, I normally take very good track of who hasn't spoken it, so if someone has not spoke to this yet, I can go back for I'll start again, councillor, so deputy Cabral, councillor Fisher, Alexander Garwood?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Um, he, 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 here's the piece I'm struggling with as well, is um there was opportunity um to enter into discussions, yet council was never brought into the discussions with respect to Remington or um Sadlin's. Um, to see how we would be able to assist them with the uh, the Midhurst Landowners Group. This could have taken place last year. And uh, there was apparently some dialogue uh between the Midhurst Landowners Group and uh Remington and uh, and Sadlin. But I guess the other thing is, you know, uh, the amount of time, and they want to jump on things, and we know that September twenty twenty-eight is apparently going to happen. There's some kind of other deadline there for March to spend uh money on the plant, but uh through you to our uh planning department, I'm going to ask, uh, maybe, maybe um Director Russell can shed some light on this. But typically through the planning stages, um, you know, developments like this, um, how long would, could they possibly take? It's not like they're going to have this built next year, maybe even the year after that, or maybe even could be a, a few years even past that when they'd be able to hook up to a pipe. Um, so, you know, this council was left out of that loop completely, so that's why I'm asking that question is maybe this could have been resolved a long time ago, had they been a little bit more amicable to working with Springwater Township and the Midhurst Landowners Group.
Director Russell?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and through you to the deputy mayor. Um, i- it's a difficult question to answer, and, and you can understand that um the timeline's going to be affected by the quality of a submission that we receive from the applicant. Their time to respond to those questions and their time to go through an agreement and execute an agreement and provide securities and um, but I think that the short answer to your question is, is measured in years, not months.
Councillor Fisher?
Just a few points. Uh, uh, I, I'm in full support of Remington and, and what they're proposing there. I'm in full support of Sadlin's and, and, and what they have come forward, although, yes, it needs some more work with our staff. Uh, and I do agree, it does send a message to the province. I just see that it provides a different message to the province that we are fully committed to growth with here, uh, within Springwater. Um, I do believe that the M L G is providing a faster solution. Uh, I mean, the proof is in the pudding. We, we've waited years for uh, for something to happen with uh, with Barry, and I think that M L G has come through, and uh, and this can be done much faster. The big question here is, and I think we have to put this out to our citizens, do they want to see those two developments come online with the city of Barry at some unknown time in the future, but they have to give up taxation dollars, D Cs, and uh, and of course, thousands of acres, it's constantly changing, so I'm not even sure what it would be. Um, if we put that to the average citizen, what would they want? Uh, I guarantee you, ninety-nine percent of the time, they're going to choose a maiden spring water solution with the M L G. Uh, so I say, send a message to the province that we are committed to growth um here in Springwater, and we're finding solutions ourselves to do it.
Not seeing anything further.
Uh, thank you. So I'm just going to make a general statement, and I could be wrong, so I'm prefacing this and I'm not making a factual statement. But my, if my memory serves, it might have been months ago, I believe there was discussion at the provincial level of them starting to pull back M Z Os that hadn't been acted on. So by supporting this, I don't feel like we're sending an awful message to the province that we don't want to develop, that we're not in support of these two projects that we, again, unanimously said we were in support of. They're not moving forward. I don't feel that it is their place to tell us how they want to be serviced on the lands we own, that, or not we own, that are within our township. Um, so to me, it's it's more of a, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? It's late. Not a state, it's more of a statement, right? This is what it is, um, and it's a statement that the province has also put out to these developers that ask for the M, M Z Os and go nowhere. So I don't really, I don't think it makes us look bad in terms of our wanting to develop this. I think we're just putting out a statement.
Councillor Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Through you to Director Russell. Um, understanding that this notice of motion speaks to revoking its support, our support for both of these M Z Os, and from what I hear around the table, and I believe councillor Fisher noted- And from what I hear around the table, and I believe Counselor Fisher noted, it would be removing the support right now, currently. And should the two applicants, I'll call them, choose to come back, council can reassess. Can you outline the MZO process, understanding that, yes, we are not approving or denying an MZO ever? But I also understand from seeing language from the province that a local council's endorsement or support on these initiatives carries significant weight in, at the province's table. So can you outline that process of, if we remove that support today, what happens with those MZOs sitting with the province, in your opinion, if you can answer that? And then should these groups come back in the future? Do they have to start that process all over again? I'm just, just not knowing the, the specifics would be helpful. Thank you.
Director Russell?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan, and through you to council. Um, again, a difficult question to answer. It, I, um, I'll, I'll say that neither of these uh, proposals are approved by the province currently. They, they are simply endorsed by this council. And I will um, go back to my original staff reports that I put forward with these um, options reports for council is, was that I noted that an MZO does not require a council's approval for the province to issue. It simply helps uh, the province um, sort and prioritize what a local council i- is, is supportive of. Um, so, s- and, and I'll say that um, the province has also recently updated its framework for an MZO and provided sort of two pathways. One that is a council-supported proposal and one that is not. So there is still a mechanism that the province could support both of these, even if council was to revoke its, its support um, or its endorsement. Um, does that?
Counselor Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Through you to Director Russell. Yes, that, that does answer my question. Thank you and sorry for throwing that at you there. Um, again, I, I understand that this was brought forth at our last meeting. Counselor Fisher, you had outlined that this was coming forward. Um, after reviewing and receiving information from Ainsley this evening, um, I'm, I'm surprised to still see it here, understanding that there, there is conflicting information that has been provided and does provide concern. I also have concern about where the line is. What, what, what MZO is next? Are we just going to continue to revoke MZOs across this municipality because something changes? Again, that's a concern that I have because a significant amount of these, like the Remington project, I have one up my way, has a significant community benefit associated with it. I'm not talking about this one specifically, but understanding that traditionally, they do. Um, some of them are just regular housing developments and I understand that as well. But in this case, it's a bit different. So I, I do, I do have concern with the line is here.
Counselor Thompson?
And I uh, call the vote and have it recorded, please.
And I was just ask, gonna ask CEO Ainsworth for her opinion. Um, CEO Ainsworth, is there an opportunity for there to be, not, not political, but is there opportunity for a staff report? Once the information comes forward on sorting all of this out and providing the recommendation of yourself and your team to this council? Because the way I see it right now, we're, I, I'm being asked to make a decision without having my staff, our staff, the township staff, provide any input onto what was transpired here this evening. And I don't know what that looks like, but we have yet to get the capacity report from the city of Berry. We don't, we need to hammer out. And I know the province isn't looking to put infrastructure, redundant infrastructure, if, if, if there's an already existing opportunity. So is there an opportunity to have direction to your staff to work through this? Or is this something that our staff would be able to do?
Um, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Um. It is definitely staff's prerogative to, to review the information that's, that's being provided from different sources. Um, and it, it is something that staff will need to do through this process. Um, the desire of council to have a, a report back um, in a timely manner would need to be uh, advised at this point. And I would recommend it be through direction of, of council if that um, is the, the will of council to, to decipher exactly what council would be looking for from staff, just to make sure. It, it would be, there is a lot of information to look at. Um, and if council could narrow that focus, uh, it would be very beneficial if you would like the information back um, shortly.
Thinking, and just as a reminder as well, um, a few meetings ago, this council sent a large package to our lawyer that was going to report back to us on different avenues, the validity of this. And again, why are we paying a lawyer? Why are we paying staff? If we have hired these individuals to give us advice, I would like to ensure that, yes, tonight, we're hearing from invested landowners in the affected land area. We're hearing from the Midhurst Land Owners Group. We're hearing from our own retired, retained staff. But there's still a lot of information out there that we haven't got back yet. So it'd be my preference that we provide direction. If that's not the will of this council, I'm fine with that too. So I will look to Counselor Fisher.
Just take a quick note, you know, I, I think we've had a lot of information provided to us from our partners. Yet after nearly two years, you think the city of Berry would have provided those numbers to us? You think they would have come to us and provided capacity numbers? They would have uh, made a proposition to us, but they've been mute on it. And so I uh, I think it's time for us to take the bull by, by the horns and uh, and come up with our own solution. So I'm, I'm firm in my, my decision.
And, and understanding that the, the package that was presented uh, to us did form part of the parcel that went to our lawyer. Um, so again, th- that's fine. I can simply vote no. It would be my preference that we, we actually get the information that we're asking before, before we make a decision. Counselor Alexander and Counselor Garwood.
Um, so can you clarify, Mayor Coglan, like the parameters of the type of staff report that you would, you would be looking for?
And thank you, and I, and thank you for that. I think the first step would be, council has requested our lawyer to review all of this information. It was a very large package, and we have yet to receive that information. And we are now jumping ahead and saying, we don't, we're not even going to consider that, we're just going to do it this way. So my preference would be to have that we have asked for it to be returned to us. We can have a, whenever it's available, I'm sure Clerk Ainsworth can, can give us an update. We can have a special meeting if, if required, we don't have to wait till September. But to vote on this tonight, I cannot do that. Um, Counselor Moore, oh, sorry, I Counselor Garwood, then Counsel-
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Just two questions. First being, do we have a estimated timeline from um, when we can expect to have that legal opinion provided back to council and the public? And then the second would be, um, there's been multiple mentions tonight around a capacity report from the city of Berry. Are we expecting this? Or if that's not the case, is, is this something that can be requested? Understanding there seems to continue to be questions. I think multiple members have mentioned it.
Um, I will turn to Clerk Ainsworth for the first part of that question. And then um, I'm going to have to think about the second one.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Uh, through this meeting, I actually sent a, a request for an update for a timeline. It is expected any day. Uh, once that is received, uh, a special meeting of council would be called um, to go over the information with Mr. Annabell.
My next question would be, is there been any update on the stage three Hempson report? And the potential of that information to be public? Not at this time?
Uh, through you, Mayor Coglan. Yeah, there's, we don't have a timeline exactly for that. We're, for, I might suggest that that would be something, the request would be something through the facilitator process that we engage is, would be my suggestion, if you're looking for that information from Berry.
Thank you. Do counsel, that was Counselor Garwood, so Counselor Moore and then Deputy Cabral. And after that, Counselor Thompson did call the vote, and I think that would be at least two or three times that we've used those. Counselor Moore?
Thank you. So to confirm, this notice of motion was not sent to Quinto Annabelle, because we didn't have this. We sent off the pu- the package about the boundary adjustment piece. This is a completely separate issue. Why I say that is because we need to treat it differently. This is not a boundary adjustment discussion. This is about servicing being provided to, to developers. So I, I don't want to muddy the waters. This is really just to allow Remitans and Sadlin's to move, to move ahead in a, in a positive way. And I think that that's been proven this evening, that there is a viable and economical option. I understand, maybe they'd rather be serviced by, by Berry, but you know, that hasn't come to fruition in over five years. And these landowners have owned these lands for much, much longer. So I, I think that if that was a truly viable option, it would have been addressed and it, we would have, we would have heard much more about it. So I'm, I'm of the opinion that if the pipe did need to be increased uh, in the city Berry, that would have to then go all the way up Bayfield Street, all the way down to the lake, around to the treatment facility. That is very expensive and lengthy, and I just don't see that that's reasonable. Um, so I guess my question really then is uh, what is, are you asking then our, our lawyer to review this as something separate from the boundary adjustment? Because truly, that's a separate issue.
No, I was asking our, to, to continue with the review of the, I, I guess what I'm saying is, much like we asked Ainsley to peer review that, we also have sent this. The information that we've received from the Midhurst and Land Owners Group is currently being reviewed by our lawyer at the request of, I believe yourself. And we have yet to receive that back. So to me, it, it's having the information in front of us rather than jumping ahead of it.
Deputy Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I'm going to take a different approach on this right now. I'm going to pretend that city of Berry was not involved at all and that we're simply having a meeting here where we are reaching out to the people who are running and own and design the wastewater treatment plant and asking that they be in a position to provide water and wastewater to the two people who asked us for MZOs. That's the way I see this. I'm not worried about the city of Berry. If these folks want to move forward and the mid, uh, Midhurst Land Owners Group is in a position to assist them, which we've basically as a council asked them to help us uh, figure that out. This to me is a completely separate issue. And really, what I feel like I'm doing right now is acting on behalf of Remington and Sadlin um, in order to move their MZOs ahead. So that's what I would like to see happen. I think this motion facilitates that. I think the other piece about the boundary adjustment, I think that's going to continue through the facilitation process. And I think that's the piece that we wanted Mr. Annabelle to, to be reviewing that, to see, you know, what's the deal going to be like at the end of the day? So I'm going to support this. Bye.
Your end. Uh, I'll go to Counselor Thompson has called the vote unless this is new information. Counselor Thompson has called the vote. A recorded vote has been called by Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Uh, so just quickly, I won't read the whole thing, but I'll, I'll read what council is voting on. So council is voting to hereby revoke its support for the two MZOs, unless they are serviced through the Midhurst Water and Wastewater Treatment Facilities. And uh, that staff be directed to circulate this uh, decision ex- expeditiously to um, to the parties mentioned in the motion. Uh, is that clear for everybody? Okay. Uh, Counselor Thompson has requested a recorded vote. When I call your name, please state yes or no. Counselor Garwood?
No.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Cabral?
Yes.
Mayor Coglan?
No.
And that is carried.
Are there any other items for future consideration? Clerk Marshall has it. So that would be that the Crime Stoppers, thank you. Any other notices or?
Uh, do we do touch figure to that?
Oh, this is that you were going to spend time over the summer to work with them, so that in September at our next meeting, you will have information. Okay, perfect. Uh, are there any other notices of motion? Any items for future consideration? May I have a mover and seconder to approve the bylaws, please? Counselors Thompson and Moore, that the bylaws listed here and be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. And this is 5,004,08 L H 2,025, 001 D Hickling Phase 1B North. Any questions on this bylaw? All those in favor? That is carried. Mover and seconder for the confirmation bylaw, please. Counselors Garwood and Alexander, that bylaw 2025 dash 053 to confirm and adopt the proceedings of council at the regular meeting held on July 2nd, 2025, listed here and be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. All those in favor? And adjournment, Counselor Moore, Counselor Fisher, that the regular meeting of the township of Springwater does now adjourn at 11:35 PM to meet again in regular meeting on September 3rd, 2025 at 6:30 PM. All those in favor? And that is carried.